There's difficulties, as you can see, so they all worked out. So I'd like to welcome you to our August the second Board of Supervisors meeting. And would you please stand to say the pledge and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and the republic.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the agenda or if there are any changes.
No change, Madam Chair.
I go have a second.
Second.
It's the move by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mrs. Eager that we adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We're going to do a resolution of accommodation and appreciation for Paige Demare, Zach Butler, and Savannah Peterson.
You want me to bring up the resolution and you want to read it first and then we can get every, the board can take action and get them in front, sure.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to read the resolution and then we will have a motion and then we will have our students to come to the front. Resolutions of accommodation and appreciation for Paige Demare, Zach Butler, and Savannah Peterson. Whereas on Thursday, July the sixth, twenty twenty-three, on duty Lake Monticello lifeguards Paige Demare, Zach Butler, and Savannah Peterson put their training into action rescuing a motorist experiencing a medical emergency. And whereas Paige Demare witnessed the car crash through the pool fence, proceed across the pool deck and through the other side of the fence, continued down the hill and across beach one before coming to rest in the lake. And whereas Paige Demare, having alerted Savannah Peterson and Zach Butler, the lifeguards, then gathered their gear and ran to the beach, finding the car rapidly filling with water. And whereas Zach Butler removed the driver from the submerging vehicle, Savannah Peterson and others helped the driver out of the water and onto the spineboard. And whereas this joint lifesaving actions taken by this team of lifeguards, assisted by Lake Monticello Maintenance Staff Josh Huntington and Travis Perry, as well as Lake Monticello residents Mark Post and Carrie Lambert, resulted in a successful and happy outcome. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fluvan County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the extent our heartfelt gratitude to Paige Demare, Zach Butler, and Savannah Peterson for their quick thinking and selfless actions. The board also thinks the Lake Monticello staff and residents who assisted and called nine-one-one and the quick response of emergency services. It is no understatement to proclaim that it was these combined efforts that saved the life of the driver. The foregoing resolution was duly and regularly adopted by the Fluvan County Board of Supervisors of Fluvan County on this second day of August twenty twenty-three. You have heard the resolution. Would someone please make a motion?
I move the Board of Supervisors approve a resolution entitled Resolution of Commendation and Appreciation for Paige Demare's Zach Butler and Savannah Peterson.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Butler and a second by Mrs.
And Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Butler's over there.
Oh, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Butler. Yes, yes. Okay, my first mistake for the evening.
Ma'am, we all will make it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. O'Brien and second by Mrs. Eager, all in favor?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Now we would like for the students to come forward and parents to, yes. Parents. Where's Savannah? You're Savannah.
First thought was I have to get my hoodie off.
All right, we got it. We got a shrink a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might have put Zach in the back. He can get right behind him.
I'm a sophomore and you are? I'll be graduating JMU this fall, or this fall, yes.
She's one of the boss.
Yeah, very excited.
Zach is headed out this year, right? Where are you going to? Senior this year? Where's Martin? Motor mouth.
We need to start all meetings like that, right? That was great.
He played second year.
Right.
That played baseball, ran track, across country.
Hey. All right, now we are with the county administrators' report, Mr. Eric. Top that one.
Got another hiccup, Billy? Yes, I hope that's not the. A couple things to report, got a lot of employees to report on here.
Wow.
The one, so welcome the new EMT BLS employees to the team. So everyone's first day was July tenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three. So Heather Spence, Jonathan Holquist, Evelyn Pinkney, Christopher Vess, Gracie Clifton, Hunter Ames, Virginia Davis, Melanie Johnson, Noah Robertson. I think there's been a few other additions, I think since that point, six, six other additions. Wow. Okay, so we have six other additions that we're trying to add in here, but they haven't been in for onboarding or anything yet. So we're, we're moving full steam ahead.
I hate to ask this question. Two of them just graduated.
Jim, here's Jim.
From the high school.
Yeah. Gracie.
My high school, right?
She came through.
Yeah, because someone asked me, told me that there were two students after work. Oh, that's great.
And then also we got a few new employees for the Public Works Facilities Department. Josh Redman started for the Assistant Equipment and Fleet Maintenance Technician. That was a new position that the board approved, actually was in the previous budget year. And then Ashton Hudson, he's a recent graduate as well. He began work with the, as a ground maintenance worker one. And so Josh Redman started July seventeenth, Ashton Hudson started July thirty-first. And then one more, Maya Seelock, she started with Social Services for the human, as the Human Services Assistant Three. And she started August one, so certainly want to welcome all those, all those employees and stuff to the, to the Fluvan County staff. And then want to give a, just a special recognition this morning to Ms. Booker. So I went to, went to the Fluvan County Public Schools Convocation and she was presented with the Fluko Legacy Award this morning for her work, all of her work as a board member. And, and just in addition to that work in the schools for all those years. So congratulations to Ms. Booker for your, for your legacy award for Fluvan County Public Schools. And then certainly I would be remiss if I didn't add that the Fluvan County Fair is coming up. It's going to be held August seventeenth through the nineteenth. On the seventeenth and eighteenth, it'll be five P M opening time. And August nineteenth, it will be a ten, ten A M opening time. So there are a lot of, a lot of good things going on this year, lots of attractions, as always, carnivals there, live entertainment. Monster truck rides are going to be done on Thursdays and Fridays. They have the Axe Women of Maine daily shows. So basically, you know, log cutting contest, I think they do some, I think I heard that they do some rolling in logs in the water and stuff. So again, so that should be kind of interesting and fun for all to see. Daily petting zoos, Kid Zone Beer Garden on Friday and Saturday. There's going to be an axe throwing area on Saturday. We got one, one of the, one of the vendors that come out that have the tents for axe, the trailers with, with surrounding areas for axe throwing. So be a lot, a lot of things for all to do. There's going to be over sixty non-food vendors and fifteen food vendors there. And certainly a special thank you to all the sponsors of the county fair. Again, with them, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be possible, but the online book, Fair Book is online and like I said, lots of fun thing, fun things happening and hopefully the public gets out to it. And then, so we got some good, good things coming along, the construction, the lights, the Pleasant Grove Athletic Fields. They began on July seventeenth. The completion of the project and everything is pending this week. Basically, the lights are all up, all they're kind of doing is finalizing some of the electric and stuff. So if you go by there and you can see from the picture below, all the lights are standing tall in the air right now. And we're just finalizing, getting the electric hooked up for it. So again, that was a CIP project that the board approved. So they're, they're up there and down softball field? Uh, yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, they should be, yeah. I think all the lights are up, the only thing that's, that's left to be, left to be done are the electric panels right now. And then some upcoming meetings, we have a meeting August sixteenth. In here, the Carersburg Performing Arts Center at seven P M. Wednesday, September sixth at five P M in the Performing Arts Center. And then September twentieth at seven P M. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions? If not, then we will go to our first public comments. Anyone who would like to speak to the board, would you come forward and give us your name and address and speak to the board? Not seeing anyone, I will close the first public comment.
Anybody on line? Just one second here. Anybody on line?
She hadn't said, she's shaking her head. Okay.
Sorry, the technical difficulties are in rare form tonight.
All right, Action Matters B, fiscal year twenty-three, BLS contingency budget transfer. County attorney budget.
Yep, oh, like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll take this one. Dan's coming into it late in the game, so I don't want to think, I don't want the public to think that Dan overspent his budget, only starting. Yeah, he was only here three weeks into the fiscal year, so. So again, the fiscal year twenty-three county attorney budget was, was over expended by ninety-one thousand dollars through fiscal year twenty-three. And I can definitely tell you, you know, a big, kind of the two big main drivers of that was certainly procurement. So one, you know, we had a, we had an increased number of contracts and agreements in fiscal year twenty-three. Two, we had, you know, the purchasing officer that we had in the position for a while was, wasn't as experienced as the previous one, so there was a lot additional oversight from the contract county attorney's office to assist with, with a lot of the contracts that were coming through. And then in addition, we had a vacancy in that individual, in that position when that individual was no longer in that position for about three months. So because of that gap in some of the vacancy and just the inexperience, we had to kind of lean on the county attorney's office a lot heavier, make sure that contracts and everything were kind of getting pushed through. And unfortunately, just from that, it's, you know, it was certainly more expensive than, than a staff on board at the time. We do have a new purchasing officer hired, actually they start this coming Monday. And so they've got lots of experience and like I said, and with, with Mr. Witten on board and things like that, you know, certainly that will streamline a lot of the processes with that. So, so procurement was probably the biggest piece of that, the budget report was in there. I think what we had estimated, we were probably about sixty thousand dollars over budget in, in that, in that realm. Now, I will say, on the flip side of that, in the finance budget, because there was vacancy savings from the, from the position being vacant, there was also vacancies and salary savings in that budget as well. And then also under kind of what we call the special category, a special category through the county attorney's budget. We also had some big ordinance changes in this past year. One, some major ordinance changes with two big ones being the, the chapter twenty-one water and sewage disposal ordinance. And then the chapter eight fire protection and public safety ordinance for the Fluvan County Department of Emergency Services. So those were kind of big, big ordinances and big rewrites that that needed to be done. So those were the main drivers of being over expended fiscal year twenty-three. Again, so we're requesting a ninety-one thousand, ninety-one thousand, six twenty-five transfer from the BOS contingency. The BOS contingency did have ninety-two thousand, six dollars and ninety-six cents at the end of the year. So that would, that would clear out basically both budgets and they would be, they would be kind of an offset. So like I said, and just as, as reference, as we start moving forward, you know, there's a little overlap too with Mr. Payne kind of being on for a little bit. And from a, from an employee standpoint, we also hired Mr. Witten, so Mr. Witten came on. So we're hoping this next fiscal year that will kind of levelize, levelize the budget out a little bit, especially once Mr. Witten and, and he gets all his staff on board too. And we start to kind of transition to in-house. But the fiscal year twenty-four budget that the board approved for the county attorney is, was three hundred, or not was, is three hundred and forty-one thousand, seven twenty-two. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has regarding this.
Any questions? Okay, then we have a motion.
I move the Board of Supervisors approve a budget transfer of ninety-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five from FY twenty-three BOS contingency budget to the FY twenty-three county attorney budget for legal services.
Okay, maybe here, second, second, okay. We have the motion by Mr. O'Brien and second by Mrs. Eager, all in favor? And chair vote aye. Next, we have the budget calendar. Do we usually get it this soon?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, the board usually tops the budget calendar, but we've, you know, we're, we're just, we're getting ready to crank up here, so.
We are. Evening, Madam Chair, remember the board?
How are you?
I'm good, how are you? So for FY twenty-five, the biggest change this year is it is not a reassessment year. However, on the calendar that you have in front of you, there are a few things highlighted in red. We do not have the information for the schools budget stuff yet. I believe that should be coming out later this week. And on the fourteenth, I believe it shows February fourteenth, we can have a work session that night if the board would like to. Or Mr. Dahl and I discussed, if you wanted, moving it to February twenty-eighth with the agency presentations. So that is one thing I would need direction from the board on. And work sessions that started at seven P M last year, the board had discussed maybe starting those a little bit earlier. So that's something I would need direction on.
Yeah, so those are two, yeah, just two things. One, we want to make sure we're not cramping into anyone's Valentine plans on February fourteenth. But again, that's just one.
We'll let you do that, it's my wife's birthday, you're killing me.
Hey, I'm giving you, I'm giving you an option.
That's love day. So.
Go on, go on.
Be here, but I'm helping you all out.
So this year we would need to set the max advertising rate on March twentieth. We would have our public hearing on April tenth and we could adopt on April seventeenth or hold a special meeting on April twenty-fourth.
So, so just a couple of decision points. And again, so one, do you want to have the constitutional? Because generally on, on, on that work session, it's just the constitutional officers come and kind of discuss their budget requests. Again, we could potentially combine them with the county agency briefs on February twenty-eighth, which is also just another budget work session day. But again, that's one decision point for the board. And then the second one is on all the work session dates. You know, it previously we did seven P M, but there was some discussion, do we want to start, start the work sessions at five P M?
On non-board.
Yeah, on non-board meeting days.
I mean, it's for me personally, it's hard to come by five because I've got a regular workday coming from Charleston. So six is great, but five is, you know, tough.
I'm, I'm all for doing it earlier, you know, as early as people can comfortably get there. It's just, to me, it's trying to cram so much in and it's, and it's often just not enough.
Yeah, I'm, I believe five o'clock or six o'clock or whenever's the best time to start as early as possible, especially on those nights. Those nights can get a little long.
So if we, so I think I hear that on non-budget days for work sessions, we'll start those at six P M. Does that sound, is that the consensus? Yeah, because I mean, we were doing seven, right? We were doing seven. You don't feel like you can make it frequently by five, so six.
Yeah, just make, yeah, makes it harder.
Yeah.
So six or five-thirty is, you know, be doable.
Do you think five-thirty is doable?
Let's do that.
Let's do five-thirty. Start as early as possible on those days.
And then on February fourteenth, mix it on, combine it on the twenty-eighth or leave February fourteenth there.
There's a high probability I will not be in town that day.
I'm good either way. Okay, so they were always. We'll probably have a really full schedule to cram that already that we're trying to cram it into the twenty-eight. But. Yeah, usually on that night, county agency briefs would be, fire rescue would kind of, you know, discuss their budget. It would be library extension, library, registrar and.
And that's when we used to have a really nice meal. Not that food is that important.
So I think instead of having five presentations, we would just have potentially ten presentations that night.
So you're going to keep February the fourteenth?
No, I think, I, I think I, well, again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board. I think I heard, don't do it on the fourteenth and put them all on the twenty-eighth. Well, I thought I heard. I'm good either way.
Okay.
Y'all, y'all okay with that?
Well, if you won't be.
Like I said, I'm probably not going to be here.
Yeah, let's just quit and do the twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and, and those are really the only thing, again, like, like Ms. Melton said, you know, it's, it's a non-reassessment year. So we don't have to advertise that budget, max advertising budget early. So again, we just have to put out a proposed FY twenty-five budget and FY calendar year twenty-four tax rate on March twentieth. So those are, that's kind of the big, the big things. And like I said, well, once we get some more direction from the schools, we'll kind of plug those dates in accordingly for when they're going to do it.
Have we ever, is that what you're talking about, the final numbers from a school for last year's budget?
No, this is just the.
This is when, 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 one, when they have their actual work session, when the schools have their work session. And then when they, when the school board actually adopts their budget. And that also has some bearing on when they come to us.
The only reason I say that is because we left during our tax season in limbo because the state just said, well, we're just not going to tell you what we're going to do.
There's still limbo too.
Yes.
Maybe we'll just be in limbo.
Who needs a budget?
Yeah.
Technically, we do. So, okay, so Ms. Melton's got those changes and, and like I said, so there's just a motion there. And then I guess we can say, as presented with, with the suggestion changes.
Okay. Motion, motion.
Uh, move the board, I move Board of Supervisors approve FY twenty-five budget calendar as presented with the changes so made.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sharon, the second by Mrs. Fairchild, all in favor? And chair votes aye. And next on the agenda is resolution of the Line of Duty Act.
Yep, so, so again, this has been kind of coming around. So Nelson County, again, it's a resolution honoring Officer Mark Christopher Wagner the second and requesting an amendment of the Line of Duty Act. And then also, uh, Chief Wells with the Lake Monticello PD is here too and provided some, provided some input into the, into the resolution. So again, Nelson County specifically was, was seeking support from Virginia localities and that of the General Assembly enacting legislation that will amend state code to provide private police officers Line of Duty Act benefits. And again, you know, as you all are aware, Wintergreen Police Officer Mark Christopher Chris Wagner two lost his life in the line of duty on June sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Again, the officers of Wintergreen Police Department, being a private police department, they're not afforded the benefits under the Line of Duty Act. And what that does, it basically provides benefits for, for, for the, for those families that, that, that are that are left with, with loved ones being lost and provide some benefits for the families from those losses. You know, speaking a little bit with Chief Wells, you know, one, private police departments, they are responsible for the prevention and protection of crime and the enforcement of penal laws and are exposed to the same risk of injury or death in protecting citizens and visitors. And so one, there are many such private police departments within our state that deserve these benefits, including the Lake Monticello Police Department. So the Virginia Line of Duty Act LOTA was established in nineteen seventy-two. And again, as we said, it provides benefits for eligible employees and volunteers killed in the line of duty and those eligible employees and volunteers disabled in the line of duty and their eligible family members. So funding of loaded benefits is provided by employers in one of two ways. One, through participation in. One through participation in the line of duty death and health benefits trust fund administered, administered through V R S. Or self-funding by the employer through an insurance program. Um, and so. You wanna make any comments? I mean, you know, we made, so in the resolution, we made a couple tweaks, because after we put it um. In the package, there was a few, few things that um, Chief Wells with Lake Monticello wanted to add in there. I keep on wanting to call cap. Chief Wells wanted to add, I know, that's.
Um, he was major.
Yeah, that's what it went out as. Um, thank y'all for your time. I appreciate your efforts. Um. Actually, Mr. Doll summed it up fairly well. Like I said, there are eight private police departments in the Commonwealth. We're one of those eight. I just want to highlight, we go undergo the same training, are responsible for the same training standards. We have to follow all the same laws as you miss police department, but because we're a private entity police department. We don't get any state benefits. Uh, we don't get any state funding, any federal funding, any local funding. We're not asking for funding. We're just asking for the chance to join into the, the fund. So if officers get killed, they're afforded the same privileges. There's a lot of other issues in the code where it's kind of not clear, because a lot of the code language references to police officers, locality or municipality or city, county or town, which technically we are not. Um, so last year, we actually went for the general assembly to try to clarify some of that language, working with Dana Schradd of Virginia Association Chiefs of Police. That unfortunately failed, so we're gonna try again this year. That's one reason we're asking for these resolutions. Just to try to get some recognition as a legitimate police department. Like I said, we're grandfathered in. It would literally take an active general assembly to create a new one. So it's just nothing that somebody can just come up with. Um, you know, we serve Lake Monticello alone, serves twelve thousand people. That's about half the county population. Um, so, and I did speak with Miss Strand of the Association Chiefs of Police. The proposed draft legislation is not requesting any funding from state or local county governments. It's merely given us the opportunity for our employer to opt into the fund where we would pay. The fund balance to be covered under that. So we're not asking for any funds again, so it has no financial impact. And now we have to answer any questions you have.
Quick question. Do y'all ever go into Sycamore? You don't go across the road from Mid Elwood, where?
So we request their services, certainly we do. We, we ask, so sometimes if county deputies are out and they're closer, because right within the lake, we ask them to come out.
That was the only reason I said that you would put Fork Union, because that's Fork Union District.
Yeah, um, you know, three, three of the districts are Lake Monticello and Fork Union is just about that far away.
Well, Kent, Columbia is that far away.
Yeah, so as it stands right now, we have M O U with the sheriff's office for certain exigent purposes. If they ask for our help, we'll go. That's one thing we're trying to clarify in the code section, exactly what can we agree with the sheriff's as far as joint jurisdiction, like. If we're on Lake Monticello Road going from the gated to the ungated or behind a drunk driver, can we stop them? Can we not stop them? What, you know, so we're trying to clarify that some of the language as well to make sure we can provide the best services. But it's not uncommon, like today, there's a disabled vehicle on South Boston Road, which technically isn't the lake. All the counties are tied up on the other end of the county. Me and my, one of my officers went over there and helped get the guy out of the road to clear up traffic before rush hour. So we have a really good working relationship. I think the sheriff's department supports us and supports this resolution.
So I say that on behalf of sheriff, past the entire sheriff's office, we do support this and. Um, hey, train with Lake Monticello, please train with us. Or we're side by side, but an active shooter event happens, let's say at the high school, but we're gonna be calling them to come help us. So him and I are going through the door. I get shot, I get benefits, he doesn't. We need to fix that. They wear the badge, they carry the gun, they do that things.
And then they execute, the chief's association supports this legislation.
They do. They're actually drafting legislation and are working with. Their politicians, for lack of a better term, I think they have a couple centers on board. Uh, to search association so far supports it, at least doesn't object to it. Uh, it's not stepping anybody's toes and you're not asking for any money and it would strictly be an option where Marla for. Like Monticello, for my instance, would pay into the fund, so we get the benefits. So we're not asked, certainly we would love their county to pay for that, but we're not asking.
So why, I mean, you said it failed last year?
We didn't try L O D A last year. We just tried to clarify some language, because I think some of the. Some wording issues and some folks really don't understand the difference between private police and special conservatives of the peace. So there were some, one of the delegates brought up, you know, if you mean Amazon can go start a police department? And I didn't have it, we weren't able to provide responses like, no, they can't. It's literally, we're grandfathered in under the old D C G S statute. And the general assembly would have to approve any new private police department. So it's kind of, we're kind of a unique beast and it just doesn't affect that many, affect that many people. So it's not a real high priority legislative thing. Now, the draft legislation would also include private campus police, such as Bridgewater. So there's eight of us and I think there are six private campuses, so it'd all be included in the load of legislation.
You, I assume you have campus police or state employees.
There are state employees, yeah. You're looking like Bridgewater, uh, Hampton, Sydney, Liberty University. Some of those are private colleges, so they, they're not eligible either. And the same way, like assault and battery and police officer, we're not covered under that because of the wording in the code. Is different. So again, him and I are the same thing. He gets punched, it's a felony. I get fined, it's simple assault. So we're just trying to clarify some of those discrepancies, just in the verbiage.
Well, I'll try not to punch either one of you.
I have to bring it in. Any other questions I can clear up or answer for you?
A- a- and again, just in the resolution, again, the resolution on the screen is a little different than was in the package, not by much. One, I, I think a little bit with the discussion of, of, of private police. Two, there is a whereas more so, which wasn't in the, the resolution in the package, after getting some feedback from uh, uh. Uh, this guy, Chief Wells, um, you know, regarding the Lake Monticello Police Department, you know, and, and it's this, this section right there mostly. And there's some other verbiage changes a little bit, but again, mostly consistent with what, what was in the package, so. Um, happy to answer any questions. And again, I, we spoke to our insurance carrier too, um, about this and, you know. They certainly weren't against it. You know, if, if, if there was a push to try and get localities to pay for it. You know, a- and make it a requirement, that would be one thing, but just allowing private employers the opportunity to be in a, like I said, there, there certainly wasn't any pushback from them.
If, if we have. Would phone calls help?
It will when the time comes, yes, sir. Uh, with the change in, in districts, you know, we're not sure who our new representatives are gonna be, so we're gonna be.
We know who the old ones are.
Yeah. We're gonna be on a short fuse. Rob Bell was helping us out last time. Of course, she's not going again.
That's okay, Lee Ware and Mark Baker.
Yeah. So yeah, anything will definitely help us once we get to that draft and I'll be happy to send you all copies once we get some draft legislation drawn up.
And again, Nelson County is kind of, kind of, you know, kind of pushed this forward. There's been a lot of other localities that have basically. Um, approved a resolution very similar to this already. I know Augusta did, I think. I think Alamo County did, I believe. What's that?
I think Bridgewater.
Yeah.
Probably those localities could be entities in.
Oh. Are we going to read this or? If, if the board wants, wants me to, I can read it.
I just have one more question. So what would be the argument against it?
I don't know. Um, the argument when we tried to get added to the assault and battery and law enforcement was it could have financial impact because offenders could get increased jail time. And they didn't want to pay for the extra jail time to make it a felony to assault us. So I'm not lying, it died in finance committee. And then the last, like I said, this last one was just, I think they thought it was an expansion of police, of nobody in police powers. They didn't understand that it's kind of already there. This one is, I think it's just not a vessel for a private entity to play, because V R S manages this fund. And there's no precedent for private entities paying into a V R S fund.
Right.
So I think that's where it came about. Um, I don't know the whole history behind it, but from what I can glean, that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm sure there would be some extra administrative costs with the Commonwealth by having to take funding from a private entity that maybe they just didn't want to deal with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's only fourteen. It can't be with so much cost.
Yeah.
And Bridgewater probably has six police officers, if that many.
It's, it's not a lot of officers that were.
Yes.
The largest private employer, I believe, is Corleone Hospital, has private police departments that service their hospitals.
Yeah, I think it's always good to read the resolution. You want to read?
I'll read. A resolution honoring Officer Mark Christopher Wagner the second. And requesting legislative amendment of the, the line of duty act. Whereas Officer Mark Christopher Wagner the second served the Wintergreen community as a private police officer. As recognized by the Commonwealth of Virginia, while responding to a disturbance call in his capacity as a law enforcement officer. Was shot and killed in the line of duty on June the sixteenth, twenty twenty three. And whereas by definition, under the code of Virginia, private police officers. Are law off, law enforcement officers subject to the same training and statutory standards. As a deputy sheriff or police officer of any city, county or town in the Commonwealth and whereas. Whoa, you moved it. The line of duty act code, Virginia code nine point one dash four zero zero. Excludes private police officers from the benefits of that act and whereas private police officers, just as their counterparts employed by the. Police department or sheriff's office, which is a part of a, of or administered by the Commonwealth. Or any political subdivision thereof are responsible for the prevention and detection. Of crime and the enforcement of penal laws and are exposed to the same risk in injury or death. And whereas Lake Monticello Police Department, which is also one of eight private police department. Recognized by the Commonwealth serves approximately twelve thousand residents located within the Ravanna, Palmyra and Cunningham districts of Fluvana County. And whereas it is the sense of the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors that the line of duty act should be amended. To afford private police officers the benefits under, available under the act. Now therefore be it resolved, the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors hereby honors Officer Mark Christopher Wagner the second. Of the Wintergreen Police Department for his heroism and honorable service to the citizens of Wintergreen and Nelson County. For whom he made the ultimate sacrifice. And be it further resolved, the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors hereby calls upon the General Assembly. To amend the code of Virginia to afford private police officers the benefits available under Virginia code nine point one dash four zero zero. Line of duty act and be it finally resolved, the board hereby directs. That a copy of this resolution requesting these state code amendments be delivered forthwith to representatives in the General Assembly. The foregoing resolution was duly and regularly adopted by the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors. The Fluvana County on the second day of August, twenty twenty three. And I would like to make that.
Yes.
I move the board of supervisors to approve the resolution entitled. Fluvana County Board of Supervisors Resolution honoring Officer Mark Christopher Wagner and requesting amendment of the line of duty act.
Okay, all right, we have a motion by Mr. Sheridan and a second by Mr. Brian. All in favor? Hi. And chair votes out. Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Y'all.
All right, we have the Palmer Village Streetscape Project, B dot Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Updates.
So, so I'll just give a little history. So again, the Transportation Alternatives Program T A P is intended to help uh. Uh, grant fund community-based projects such as sidewalks. Uh, and enhance the transportation experience by both the cultural and historic aspects of the locality's transportation uh, infrastructure. Um, so the grant, uh, the grant, this grant would provide funding to construct concrete sidewalks and related concrete curbing along Stone Jail Street. Remove Court Square Road that bisects the lawn area between Civil War Park and the historic courthouse. Provide properly marked and much needed angled and parallel parking spaces. Uh, along the new proposed one-way road system and to further improve the Palmyra Village B dot roads. So this is just, again, just a quick depiction, uh, conceptual layout of what it is. Again, you know, here's fifteen right here, here's Main Street, here's the historic courthouse. Here's Civil War Park right there. So what it does, it creates kind of a one-way in, into there. Um, pretty much makes from this point on, makes this street being a one-way street, which would have parallel parking in the street and then some angle parking. It would basically connect um, this, uh, the historic courthouse and Civil War Park with more of a. In- instead of kind of that odd street area would provide more of a, an extended um. Lawn area kind of throughout that area, but also provide some, uh, some sidewalks, some crossings, some parallel parking along that area as well. So that was the project. Uh, and again, this is just kind of showing, you know, again, you'd, you'd have sidewalks kind of going right along this area right here. They'd have to remove some of that existing cracked concrete wall that's there um, around the park. Uh, same thing. This is on the north side of, of Civil War Park. Yeah, the grass would be basically kind of right here, connecting this grass going up towards the historic courthouse. And so again, uh, the Palmyra Village Streetscape Project is one of the board's current uh, B O S goals. Um, the, the, on September one, twenty twenty one, the board authorized and approved submission of the grant. County received notification on September second, twenty twenty two, being awarded the grant and what the amount was on October nineteenth, twenty twenty two. The board did approve appropriation of its twenty percent match for the grant. Which that twenty percent match of, of the project cost at the time was gonna be three seventeen eight thirty one. So that's what the board approved and now we're here today. Like many projects, things have increased and V dots pretty much going around. And making sure that, that localities are still interested. They didn't want to surprise a locality, get down and say, hey, oops, well, the project, you said you're gonna do a twenty percent match, but now the cost have, have increased. And so before they start moving forward with things, they just want to make sure and they want to reaffirm that localities are still interested. So just kind of showing what that twenty percent match does, it basically increases our, our, our contribution from three hundred and seventeen eight thirty one to four thirty six. And I will tell you what, what they did, you can see the preliminary engineering hasn't really increased. The right of way has increased a little bit. We are hoping to that right of way cost may go down a little bit, because in some of the cost, it shows right of way acquisition. Well, the whole parcel where all this works is being done on is on county property, so I don't think we're necessarily gonna pay ourselves to have to pay to do something. So I think there'll be some savings from that standpoint. Again, they're looking at it as just any project. They just. They just show what the right of way cost potentially could be. And then the construction piece, as you can see, is the one that kind of really went up the most. Um. You know, s- so really what they're doing is they took some of their original costs for construction, because construction is, is the area that's kind of gone up the most. From, you know, from, from labor and, and really from concrete and, and concrete prices have gone up a lot. So they took some of those original costs. They're like, okay, well, what are they today? And then they, they factored them up a little bit too, potentially just to make sure. Now, this would be, um, speaking with Scott Thornton and the rest of the V dot staff, this would be kind of worst case scenario. They, they are hoping that this two point one eight is, is, is a high figure and it would go down from there, but. At the same time, they need to just make sure that if it does come up to that, that the locality is interested and is, is, is. Accepting and re-infering, reaffirming and confirming they want to do that. So again, it would be a hundred and eighteen thousand one sixty nine increase for the project. Again, this is kind of everything that, that the project would include. You know, uh, preparation roadway plans, drainage plans, signage markings, public invol- involvement activities, environmental studies. Acquisition bid, bid proposal, um, administration, advertisement. You know, the oversight of construction, construction engineering service and construction uh, closeout of the project. So really kind of where we are is in order for the county to move forward, the county must approve an additional hundred and eighteen thousand one sixty nine as, as the twenty percent match of the estimated cost of two point one million. And again, that money is spent over um, a four-year period of time. And then there's a resolution that was in the package. It's basically the resolution that the board approved, approved before, but instead of affirming, it's a resolution reaffirming the commitment to fund the locality share.
Where did this initiative come from?
So it really kind of came forward from just, you know, I, I think from the. Community of having a, a better traffic flow there. I, I, I know there's been some things that have come from citizens. You know, once the county's out there to have kind of more of a um. More of a marketable or, or usable area in that space of the Palmyra Village and, and help to. To retain, retain the businesses that are, that are there a little bit. And again, the board put it on one of their B O S goals. Um, kind of their, what was called the strategic plan before is now their B O S goals, the board approved that to, to be in there.
I guess I follow up to the, to the Fork Union Streetscape too, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's the Fork Union Streetscape and then there was discussion about doing a, um, from the board about doing a, a kind of a Palmyra Streetscape in, in that area to kind of, you know, fix it up and, and make it more walkable from a. From a historical standpoint and uh, historic tourism and, and businesses and.
Oh, I know. Another one of the things was, it's such a hazard around that. Park. If you go on the Miss Williams's side of the park. There's a three-foot ditch, it's got a metal grate on it, it sometimes moves around.
No, no, I will say, just to be clear, just to be clear.
Going now?
No, no, just be clear, this doesn't, let me go back to the, let me go back to this.
Right.
Let me go back to the piece here. Yeah, I mean, so that one, this is not for this whole area. There would, there would have to be a phase two to this. This doesn't get rid of the metal benches and stuff.
Get rid of.
No, this is just kind of what you're seeing there, removing the, the, the asphalt in that middle area, creating more of a, a. A lawn throughout the whole area, angled parking, some sidewalks going from the courthouse down. Um, and some, some, I guess a little more structured street parking and street flow in the area.
Uh, do you think you'll have an equal number of parking spaces? Because they're parked right now, the people can park up around the.
courthouse and where they're putting the grass?
Yeah, I mean, really, you are probably losing, well, let me say this, I didn't, yeah, I don't think you're necessarily losing because you're gaining parking spaces over here in, in this area. And again, what you're, what you may be losing right there, you kind of have, it's kind of flip-flopping there. So I, I don't think I don't think you're necessarily losing spaces. It, it, you're probably gaining, you're, you're gaining a lit, a few spaces. But it provides some more structure to the, to the street flow. And sometimes too, you know, just due to the fact that it's kind of such a hodgepodge in that area, cars kind of park all over the place in there and there's no kind of structure from, you know, if, if there's any larger vehicles that come through that area. And I remember too, you know, I think this started a little bit too, from some project, you know, because there's also discussion of, of, I think fire and rescue apparatus and, 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 and school buses and stuff going through there and and it's, it's a little, it can be a little difficult to maneuver in there right now, depending on how people park because there's no structure there.
But you, you would lose the parking along the jailhouse side of the park that is a question, is, is that correct? Yeah, through all that area there.
Right here, people, yes, there now some parking right in this area because, because again, that's some of the area. It, it's a little bit of a bottleneck right in there and, and you necessarily can't get appropriate sized vehicles. So you may lose a little bit there, but what you're losing right there, you're going to be gaining in this area right here because right now there's no parking in this area right there. So, so from this stretch right here, it's probably about a wash. And from this area right here, what you're losing right here, it's probably about an offset in the angle parking that you're going to, that you're going to gain right there. So it's it's probably comparable in the amount of parking. It's just a little better flow and structure. And, and again, no VDOT, they walk the whole area and, and look at what was a, a best best flow for that.
And, and if they park where you're talking about, Chris, along that wall, then it's a one-lane road. Now it's still used as a two-lane road, but it's a one-lane road.
Right, uh, but so you'll still have the parking along Main Street.
Yeah, the, yes, they'll still be parking on like it would be one side, yeah, one-sided parking on Main Street.
And now people park on both sides and you, it's kind of a one-way.
Yes, ma'am.
Give, give each other.
It's, you have to pull over and wait for that car.
Can you do the same thing with the flow by just putting up one-way sign? So if you didn't do any of this right here, leave all that the same and, and you just this is a, a one-way. And you can either go that way or you can go this way and buy the the church. This is about a church right in the treasures office.
Yeah, right up here.
Yeah, you go. You could take, do the same thing if you had one-way signs. Because I think someone said, gave us a draw-out one time. Steve. What was Steve's last name? The engineer.
Oh, Wayne Stevens?
Stevens.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Wayne.
Yeah, way, 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 way back in the day. I, I do remember there was a discussion of, of for VDOT to come out and paint lines throughout the area rather than do more of a project. And then when it really, when it kind of came to it is
Yeah.
Again, I think it kind of came from, from the board to do more of a streets project there.
Yeah, one of those ones where the thing came up where we could apply for grants and we received a grant with a twenty percent match.
But, yeah.
But one thing about it is if they take care of part of that wall and fixes it, that's going to cost money. So that's a savings there. Eventually, we were going to incur, and this one is one where we can share it with a twenty eighty percent. I think that's, I think those were the biggest this decision makers. That's the question you were asking is why we chose to do this? And to try and make Palmyra more easily accessible that more people would go up and.
And, and try, and I think there's a discussion too of making that whole kind of area more walkable from people coming in because right now it's in one from a handicapped accessibility standpoint to get into Civil War Park. It just provides some more accessibility and walkability through the kind of the whole village a little bit. And let's say the wall right there creates a little bit.
Do we have picnic tables in the park?
There, yeah, there are.
Yeah, that's just a place where we can put more picnic tables and just more benches, just to come up and sit down, read a book.
Yeah. I just don't know whether it's, and so what's the total now? A hundred?
It'll be four hundred and thirty-six thousand, which was previously was three hundred and seventeen thousand. And again, that's that's the high watermark from, from what VDOT told me.
I'm not, I'm wondering just personally if we could look at it by not doing that, but getting the flow the way we want it. Without all the other things. That's a half a million dollars. I'm not sure. It looks, it looks pretty and but I don't know.
I mean, you know, I think that we kind of went through this and the board.
Yeah, we've done, right, yeah.
Uh, this is an increase. There's always an increase in projects, so.
How long ago did we approve this?
Two years. You approved it, no, a year ago. You approved it in.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not.
You approved it in September twenty, basically a year ago is when, is when the board approved the, the grant and, and, and the funding, the three seventeen.
That says twenty twenty-one, September first.
No, well, that's when you approved, you approved the grant, the board authorized the grant submission, but, but we were notified wow, about basically a year ago that, that we received a grant. And that's when the board approved the, the funding for it.
Right.
Well, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah.
October nineteenth.
So what do we want to do, boy?
It's, it's great to pay twenty percent for something. You know, then I mean, and as you said, we, we've already approved up until now and said that, or the board did that should move forward. But what if it goes up another hundred and fifty? You know, was it done going up and where do we stop?
I, I think, and I don't know the numbers, but if I recall the numbers for addressing the, the runoff that's happening down the side and redoing that wall were pretty substantial. I mean, they weren't, they weren't four hundred thousand dollars. Not saying that, but
No.
They were maybe a hundred and fifty.
I was gonna say two hundred.
I don't remember the exact number.
Yeah. Going, like I said, this was before me being in this position. I mean, going back, I, I remember some of the cost to I wanted to do something with the wall repairs and things like that. That was going to be costly. I mean, so this is kind of a I don't, certainly I don't think it was going to be three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars worth of cost. So, so there's there's an offsetting cost piece to it, but then there's also some, some improvements and walkability piece to it and, and better traffic flow and.
The handicap, I remember the handicap was a big thing because it's not handicap access. And, uh, but we can use the same formula for the repairs that were given to us six years ago or however long that was.
Yeah.
We use that same formula, we might as well multiply that times at least do about three.
Yeah.
Are they ready to start on this project now?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, we're pretty much what they're doing. So they've done some of the engineering and again, you know, just with projects and everything, you know, from the, from, from the top up, they're like, you know, because they were getting some, some localities that will, will hold, hold, hold the phone here. This, this, this price went up too much for us. And, you know, there are some larger projects.
Say there probably are some big ones where it went up six hundred thousand.
Yeah, there's some, there's some big ones out there. And, and again, this one's all, it's all relative in, in the piece, but they just want to make sure that, that localities are still. So, because again, there are some smaller localities that got, got surprised on some projects. So I think they just want to make sure that there's no surprises. And like I said, speaking with Scott Thornton at VDOT, he's optimistic that, that they feel they can bring some of the costs down and there's some things, but again, they have to plan and they have to get the commitment up to that amount. That's an up-to-amount really.
And we've already allocated the money.
The three seventeen you already did.
Already allocated enough of it. So there's
It is.
There's theory, no budgetary impact because most of this would probably come out of your CIP.
This would be fun. I mean, you, you would just, you funded the three seventeen out of unassigned fund balance. So the additional would just be on assigned fund balance.
Yeah. I mean, I think we should move forward. I think it's an improvement to, to Palmyra. I think it cleans up the space. I think it makes it more usable across the board for the enjoyment of the park, opens up the park. I think that was the other part because it was opening up the park because the park's kind of closed right now.
Yep.
There was no handicap access to it.
Because that was the issue we were going to, that was, that was a pretty good price tag just to make it handicap accessible.
So I, I feel like it's a good, still a good, still a good project.
Could I see the picture again? And where the, which part of the wall that they're taking?
Like for instance, here, this is the south part of the wall, some, some of the wall on the south and, and
that'll be gone and this, this is, this will be grass.
Yeah, let me see here. It's, I, I can't.
From right there where you are, I think going all the way.
Yeah, I think right around here, I saw somewhere the wall goes away and
All the way to the Main Street.
Yeah, I can't see. Remove seventy-five feet part of wall is I think what that yellow says if I.
Off that corner.
Yeah, we're right up seventy-five feet is, yeah, supposed to be right in that area.
Let me ask you a question. Well, I wonder if they're gonna put it back or why don't they just remove the whole earth thing up there?
And again, this is conceptual. They, they may get to it and they may say it's just, it's easier just to.
Just simpler just to take it all right there, except for what's on Main Street.
I thought they were removing part of what's on Main Street because that's where they have the drainage issues.
No, the Main Street piece, that is not part of this. That would have to be, that would have to.
Well, the drainage issues.
The drainage issue is right along Main Street because right along the west side of the park is, is what Mr. Sheridan said. There's, there's kind of these
Yeah.
ditch or, or whatever.
Two foot, three foot deep.
Yeah.
So they're not.
Franchised and covered by, they're, they're not removing the wall on that side.
See the drainage.
No, on that side they're not. That would, that would have to be a, a, a ladder, a later project.
So you're still going to have the big ditch?
That, that would still be there, yes.
And the, uh, the wall up by the, uh, top of the where they're going to put the grass, that's got to go away, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm. Um, you know, that's, Mr. Eagle, that's actually, that's a really good question.
If you're removing all that pavement, it's a really simple move to just remove the concrete right.
Yeah, I don't recall. That one I will say, I don't know if like right up here, I don't know if all the wall is being removed up there. I think they're making more of a.
It's at the courthouse. Yeah, I'm not talking about the courthouse. I'm talking about just around the park right there.
Yeah, you would, if you're putting the grass there.
Yeah, I, I.
That would make no sense down the wall there.
Yeah, it says.
Like you said, this was conceptual. That's probably something they never even factored in or thought about.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I guess what I can do is I can I can double check with VDOT. I mean, this was their conceptual sketch. And again, they're going through kind of the, the engineering and design and you know, if there's a way to do that, I mean, from the, if, if that's what the board wants, I can talk to them about that and.
I think we should know.
Yeah.
Separating grass from grass.
Yeah, there's, there may be an area right.
Right there, next day. Just for drainage issues to force the water down there.
Did you say, somebody asked and I'm, they can miss the answer, when they're going to do this? Start it.
So, um, yeah, then, so, so I think if I remember correctly, the construction, let me go on the package here. Because it was in I want to say the construction wasn't going to be taking place until about here. Let's see here. The project's supposed to be done. Um, so it looks like the start date of some of the, looks like this is going to be taking place. Most of the, the work you would see would be twenty twenty-five.
Wow, okay.
The completion.
Uh, let's.
Twenty twenty-five, I thought.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Oh, there's, so here's the construction. It looks like end date would be twenty seven. Twenty seven, because again, the project was going to be spread over from twenty-three to twenty-six. You're paying a little bit every year into it. It's not, you're paying the whole thing upfront.
It may go up more between the now and when they've started or ended.
It was a relative. My question is barring something dive in the economy. It only is reasonable that this is, the cost of this is going to go up. You know, if it's, if it's going to be wrapped up by first half of twenty-four or something ago, okay.
Yeah.
Our exposure is less, but I mean, this could like, could this keep increasing until it's done?
So, so I mean, I, I will tell you, VDOT put in, they put a twenty percent in here, I, I think to to anticipate future potential costs as a worst-case scenario, they put in, here it is, I'm sorry. Here's the inflation factors. So the PE, because it's current, they didn't put in an inflation factor and they're the right-of-way work. They almost put a twenty percent inflation factor in the, in the, in the right-of-way estimates. And then on the construction estimates, again, they increased the estimates and then they put an inflation factor, a twenty-five percent inflation factor to see the project through, you know, twenty-six and.
When do we start paying for this?
Well, I mean, you, you would start paying on some of the, the engineering and stuff now, but you would only pay per year depending on what, what was happening.
So in other words, if it came back and it was monstrous, then we could just say no.
Um.
I, I don't think so. I mean, I think once they kind of begin the work, I mean.
I'm talking about if it goes up again, don't we get the opportunity to?
We are in the middle of construction at that point in time, right?
Yeah, I mean.
You've got a twenty percent.
And right now you'll be responsible for a portion of engineering costs.
Yeah.
So I mean, if it's going up, VDOT's paying eighty percent of that cost. I'm sure VDOT's well aware of project scope increases on their stuff.
Again, what they did is they, they, they increased the base cost and then they added an inflation factor on top of that cost.
Push it out one year.
My circus.
Putting it.
The past fourteen years to do that half of the Streetscape and Falkin. Never, if any, it's not finished. I don't even know what that cost. I don't. And I know in our, uh, plan, our strategic plan, it has Falk Union revitalized. Now what? I don't know exactly what that means. Whether they're going to complete the project or not. And saying we don't want to start something and then can't finish.
What they're front-loaded of. What's that? With it front-loaded as much as it is, because I was wondering why it went up fifty percent. And that's why, because they're adding whatever they think the additional cost will be. Because it didn't go up fifty percent in one year. I mean, we have been going up that much here lately. Couple of years back we did, but not now.
Well, it's, it's where do you get the fifty percent from on computer?
The construction cost. The construction job cost jumped from nine million, nine hundred thousand to one point four something million. So it went up more than fifty percent. You know, so that's why, that's why I'm saying that, the construction cost itself.
So Eric, we need to this is an action.
Yeah, it is.
So we need to make a.
Yeah, it's an action to one, if the board wants to.
It's one eighteen, I'm okay right now.
Okay. I move the Board of Supervisors to approve an additional supplemental appropriation of one hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine from an assigned fund balance allocated for twenty percent match for the VDOT Transportation Alternative Program Top Grand for Palmyra Village Streetscape City CIP Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been moved, it has been moved by Mr. Bryant and second by Mr. Sheridan. All in favor?
Aye.
Hesitate. Um, Chair's going to say aye.
Okay.
I move the Board of Supervisors to adopt the resolution entitled Resolution Reaffirming Commitment to the Fund the Locality Share of Projects Under Agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation and provide signature authority for the Palmyra Village Streetscape Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have the motion by Mr. Brian, second by Mr. Sheridan, all in favor? And Chair votes aye. All right, so we are finished with that one. Thank you all. Appointments. We have the, uh, MACA.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
You have two, you have two appointees for MACA and, and, and we ended up emailing one. We had a little, um, we didn't pull down the, the data, the, what was it? We didn't pull down the, the data, the, what was it, Caitlin, the, what do you call it? What's that, the application deadline um, for this one? And we got one literally like just as the package was printed, so. We didn't necessarily have a, something online that said you can't submit after this. And since it came in basically the day that we were preparing the package, we, we emailed that one. So you have two appointees. You have Austin Baker and Samantha Wood. And I think. I don't think Samantha Wood is on any other boards, committees or commission and Austin Baker, I think. Is it down below here? This one. Yeah, region ten.
He's of region ten?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, you know, Caitlin, you need to take off of the application, the um. Oh my goodness, the aging one, because that's no more. You know what I'm talking about.
You talking about right?
Yeah.
Couldn't help myself.
I, Monta Chala. All right, so we have Austin.
Is anybody here to speak?
Austin Baker, do we have any? Austin Baker put up his application and you say he, he's, he checked a lot of areas. The others. Maybe only checked MACA. She had worked with MACA before, I think they all had mental health training.
I think Austin's um. You know, we've had that application. We have a chance to look at it and his credentials in the. Community service world are strong. I mean, he's got his BS in psychology. Qualified mental health professional. Five years mental health experience, including three community service boards. I mean. Seems like we know plenty about him. And unfortunately. The other one came in kind of last minute without as much uh, robust information. It looks like to me he's.
Yeah, she had a, she had some mental health too and she's also worked with, hadn't she worked with MACA?
Is this her?
Yeah, this is hers, yes.
Yeah. Keep. Going down. She did something wreck me housing. Oh, she worked a lot with homeless.
Yeah, it looks like, did a lot of work with the Haven.
Right. And then we look at um, MACA. And what they do. They, they manage um, the head start programs. They do outward bound, um, they do the students. Getting students ready for college. They do the food bank. They also want to do more with training on helping people manage their finances. I don't know whether they do a lot with mental health.
I'm okay with either one.
His application, I wanna see his, Mr. Austin's application, because you say he's already on which board?
He's on region ten.
He's on region ten, which is for him, that's region ten is mental health. I wanna see where he checked, what he checked.
Um, let's see.
I got it right here, man. Which one you wanna know? Economic development.
Yeah, he, yeah, these, all of these things, he's, he checked. And he's very capable of doing a lot of those regions.
I think he did, yeah.
Yeah, the region ten is.
I think he's had in the back over there.
Yeah, back right.
And I'm very bored, he's.
He was pretty impressive.
Right, he's very skilled in a lot of areas. He checked a lot of things. Now, if you look at the. Young lady, she checked only one and that was MACA. And I, she must, I don't know what date she checked that. And they're good. Both of them are good, I don't.
I mean, he's young, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Energetic.
Energetic, so I don't, I don't know how old Miss.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
But it doesn't matter, you're right.
W- we're definitely fortunate to have good qualified candidates for, for the, for our different boards.
And they meet, that board meet um, on Thursdays in the afternoon like that, something in Charlottesville. We have a motion.
Um, sure, I'm with the board supervisors approved bowling board and commission or. Committee members, my child, our community action agency for the citizen, Austin Baker. Begins term eight, two, twenty, twenty-three, and it's term ten thirty-one.
I'm sorry, I've just laughed this for two and a half months. And then they gotta, we gotta do this again.
Yep, yeah, right.
Yeah. Right.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bryant and second by Mr. Fairchild all in favor. And Chair votes, I. Thank you. Now, and we've finished presentation Zion Crossroad Route two fifty, Route fifteen wastewater preliminary engineering report. Mister Doll.
Yep, I love Brett, Brett Heim with uh, Dewberry again, um, and then Mr. Popwitz is here. Again, you know, this was a discussion about how to expand the county's um, infrastructure up at Zion's Crossroads. Again, we've got the distribution lines and the main lines, but to further economic growth in that area. Um, usually what, what would happen is the county would pay for some of that main infrastructure. And then the connections by the users would offset that as time goes on. So I, I'll let Brett uh, talk about the, the preliminary engineering report. Just let me know when you wanna go to next slides.
Sure. Good evening and thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Brett Heim with a senior project manager with Dewberry Engineers. And uh, just a quick agenda, I'm gonna go over a little bit of terminology. I talk about water and wastewater all day. I know you guys don't, so might be helpful just to. You know, be able to track along with what I'm sharing with you tonight, um, go a little bit into the background of the project. Um, the need for why we're expanding the system, how we sized it, where we located the pump station, gravity sewer and force main. Um, how we propose to phase the job. And then um, what everyone's probably most interested in is the, the opinion of probable construction costs. Um, so, um, just some terminology. So when we refer to gravity sewer, we're referring to the pipes that are, you know, underground. The flow goes by gravity. Generally, it flows to a wastewater pump station or to a, a water wastewater treatment plant. Um, if it flows to a wastewater pump station, we're able to pump it through a pressurized pipe uh, known as a force main. And um, that either gets pumped to another portion of gravity sewer, which leads to a wastewater treatment plant or to another pump station. And so um, obviously the wastewater treatment plant, that's where we clean and treat the water before releasing it back into the environment. And then um, just uh, the M G D is a unit of flow and, and that stands for a million gallons per day. Um, so a little bit of the background, so we were tasked by uh, the county to uh, evaluate expanding the wastewater system. Um, uh, around uh, Route two fifty and south along Route fifteen. Uh, we completed a draft P E R in May of this year and the final P E R in June. Um, and then, keep going, Eric. And so, um, some of what we're, what we're looking to capitalize on is uh, with the expansion of the system is to. Um, to, to capitalize on the interest in development along Route two fifty and fifteen. And to allow for continued development in those areas around Troy Road two fifty and fifteen. Uh, this was also identified as part of the twenty twenty-two board approved uh, utilities master plan. So it's right in line with the current um, master plan. Um, and, and really it's to be able to support those exist or those, you know, no uh, potential developments with, with uh, utilities in that area. Um, and again, uh, there's an opportunity here to capitalize on that development um, with cost sharing for expansion of the system in that area. And so this is just a map of the current uh, wastewater uh, master plan that was included in that utilities master plan. There's a lot of information on here. I'm not gonna talk about everything, but um, uh, uh, on the right hand side, that um, hatched in area that's um, black with the lines through it. That's the proposed um, uh, service area of this future pump station. And so um, you know, again, it's, it's right in line with the expansion or with the utilities master plan um, as, as it's shown here currently.
And again, just a lot of these little sk- uh, spaghetti lines, again, the black line, black dotted line, that's the existing. Force main right now that is in place that goes to the DOC. And again, the, the dotted lines are the, the pressurize um, force mains going back to the main line. And then all the red and blue lines, the solid lines, those are gravity.
Right. And these are all just projects that were identified as potential projects as the system grows as, you know, as it's needed.
Yeah, but again, we're just focusing on the, the black hatch area there.
That's right. So again, this is just a little bit of a zoomed in view of the potential service area. Um, you, you can see it there in green on, on the right hand side. Um, the idea is that it would, you know, serve everything um, basically east of Troy Road and south of two fifty and, and hope. And, and some of that area uh, just north of two fifty. The existing wastewater pump station service area is shown there in blue. Um, and the existing pump station is shown, is identified by that um, square with a P in the middle of it. And then uh, as Eric noted on the previous slide, um, the force main is shown as the dotted line going down to the DOC wastewater treatment plant. And you can go to the next one. And so some of um, our reasoning behind how we sized the pump station, we, we sized it um, or, you know. Prelimarily for one million gallons per day. Um, we're limited by a couple of things that we're, we're, we're pumping this to the existing pump station. So we're limited by the size of that pumping station. Um, so we're not gonna exceed the current capacity of that station. Um, by sizing it for one million gallons per day. And um, just kind of a rule of, or, rule of thumb, one million gallons per day will get you about four million square feet of office space. Or, you know, five million square feet of, of, or sorry, five million square feet of office space or about four million square feet of a shopping center. Um, and then we're also limited at the Department of Corrections wastewater facility. That um, plant is uh, currently rated for uh, point three million gallons per day. But it has the capability in, in the plans to be able to, or it has the capability to be expanded basically up to one point eight M G D. And we're, the county is currently in discussions with the DOC. Uh, to begin evaluating the next stage of expanding that, that plant up to point six M G D.
And, and the board previously authorized me to start those discussions with, with um, the Department of Corrections, just uh. Just from a discussion standpoint, so we've met with um. Individuals from the Department of Corrections in the state, um, and so we've. We've given them some, some potential phasing and so they're gonna go back. I mean, certainly nothing concrete or anything. They're gonna go back and see to what degree would they want to work with the county to expand their system for what it could do. Because again, they've got capacity to treat, one, their system is expandable and then they've got the, uh, what's it?
The nutrient allocations. So um, when we located the wastewater pump station, we're, we're trying to balance a couple of things. We're obviously trying to balance the costs and the constructability. Of the um, of the, the, the facilities as well as maximizing the area that we're able to capture flow from. Uh, we wanna be able to leverage existing development interest in the area. So we wanna make sure that we, um, you know, capture that. And we also wanna attract, you know, new business to the, to the county utilities. And so. Um, we evaluated three different routings for the gravity sewer. We evaluated uh, five different routings for the force main. And then uh, three different uh, locations for the wastewater pump station. And so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on, on this, but uh, this is, this was in the report how we evaluated these. But we, these are really the three primary options that we um, boiled it down to in the report. The um, the bold red line is your gravity sewer and you can see that it extends from, you know, up above. Uh, two fifty all the way down to basically the intersection of uh, Little Creek Road and Troy Road. Um, and then um, that's where we located our pump station for option one. Under this option, we had two different force main options, which are shown as the dotted lines. And those are shown conveying flow up to the existing uh, Zion Crossroads wastewater pump station right there on fifteen. Um, so, so this was option one. Um, you'll notice some slight differences. It, it's primarily in the gravity sewer um, routing. Uh, and the forcing routing. So this option uh, again pulls or extends up to two fifty. Um, it jogs over in um, behind the Virginia School of Metal along Troy Road and um, essentially borders and parallels and existing creek there. And it goes all the way down to just south of uh, Little Creek Road. Um, um, and, and generally, you know, pump stations are located at the lowest point in the system. You wanna be able to, and, and. And gravity sewer are located, you know, along lower points in the system. So that's why we put them in creek beds, because everything kind of flows downhill. Um, and so then when we repump it up, the, the dotted lines there are, are shown um, repumping. Uh, or, or as two options to pump it to the existing uh, Zion Crossroads wastewater pump station. And option three, which ended up being the recommended option. Um, uh, i- is shown, is shown there. And again, it's just, it diverges a little bit away from the creek. Um, uh, at that point, and um, it's shown on a, on um, just south, again, just south of Little Creek Road. This option, uh, it was the recommended option, not only because it was the shortest route, which resulted in the shortest cost. It was the shortest gravity sewer route and the shortest force main route, but it also impacted the fewest amount of property owners. Uh, which is definitely something we wanna, wanna be conscious of when we do these, these projects. And um.
And plus one thing too, since some of the other options where the pump station was going, it was going more into a residential area. And so there was really only really one vacant property there. So if you wanted to have. A bunch of individual residences hook into it, well then maybe you'd wanna put it elsewhere, but. Again, they've got current existing systems in place. So if you, if you routed this way. It, it lends a little bit more to, to a business development side too. So that's, that's kind of some of the, some of the thoughts.
And so then thinking through some of the phasing of the project, um, you know, the idea was really to, to not spend the money when we don't have to. Um, so phase one would include the building of the pump station and the force main, which is, you know. Most necessary to be able to convey flow from this area to the existing wastewater pump station. Um, the parcels along Route fifteen are more likely to develop sooner rather than along the gravity sewer route. Um, and that, and then we would also be able to leverage potential cost sharing with the developers in this area. They would, they would essentially be responsible for extending, you know, if, if they're developing along fifteen, they would be responsible for, for extending gravity sewer to the pump station location. And then um, you know, the, for phase two, this extension up to Route two fifty, that would basically be, you know, at the point when demand um, in that area. Um, you know, requires us to extend the gravity sewer up there. And so um, our, our opinion of costs uh, is shown here uh, again, for the three different options. Um, for option one, which was the longest flow or, or uh, gravity sewer option and force main option. We're showing about ten point three million for option two, uh, which was just the next uh, shortest one, where we were at nine point eight million. And for option three, the total project cost for phase one and two is about eight point three. And so for that phase one, we're um, with the force main and pump station, we're at about four and a half million that we estimate um, for. For the uh, those facilities. And the next slide, I think just touches briefly on the timeline. So. Um, for phase one, we, we think we can get the design and easement acquisition completed within twelve months. Um, for the force main and pump station, the construction period would be probably twelve to eighteen months. Um, and then for phase two, about a twelve month design period and easement acquisition period. And then construction's a little bit shorter there, because we're not as. Uh, dependent on uh, mechanical and electrical components, which are mu- much of the longer lead items and driving product schedule when we get to construction. I know that was a lot of information. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Do we have a better picture of phase three? Cause here's my one question. I'm sitting here.
You said that phase.
Right here, right there. It looks to me like that's going right down through the middle and is sitting right in the middle of that piece of land that could one day be a business.
Right there, I will say there is um, some lower wetland.
I know that's.
More, lower wetland areas there. So you would have a lot heavier lift from a business trying to.
I just don't wanna lose, you lose an entire. Acres, that's my only thought. That's not my expertise.
Yeah.
Just looking at it, I was like, it's going right down through the middle of it.
And, and again, this is the preliminary engineering report. It doesn't mean that this is exactly where it is, but this is.
That was my only thought.
Yeah, looking at the option.
We go down the middle of it, then we limit them what they can do.
Yeah, so I mean, we locate them in the lower areas generally because that land is, is less usable. Um, that's kind of why we looked at that, this, this particular location, but. Um, yeah, obviously that would be something that we would, you know, consider when we.
That was my only question.
So from. From a growth projection standpoint. And the need for the sewer. This capacity. And working with V dot. I mean, with the Department of Corrections. Um, we're anticipating this need in the next three years. And that's a little early to say still, but.
It is, you know, I, I, I think it depends upon what you see along fifteen here. That's, that's. That's some of the, that's some of the, if you see more development happening. Or if the board wants to see more development happening from Starlight Business Park going south on fifteen. Well, if you don't have this in place, you're not going, you're not going to be able to have development there, because again. You need the low spot to be able to pump it back up to our existing pump station. So, so uh, I guess it's. It, it could be a couple of things. I mean, it's necessarily not a. it's not a capacity. I mean, there, there's certainly a capacity issue. I mean, because if, if DOC doesn't have the capacity, building this doesn't make any sense. But if you want to start growing the business coming down fifteen, kind of where, uh, I guess from a little south of where the pump station is to Little Creek area, that's where you would want to see that in place.
And isn't, we have already have the warehouse space approved about right where that is.
You try to cross street. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's basically right around that area.
That's the bottom of that lot, right?
That is, that is the, that is the lowest part of our, of our CPA right there. That's, that's kind of where the CPA is.
Yeah, that's go down to Shepherd Lane.
Pass separate lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is where the, 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 the little white lines right there, straight across from it, where the light, the wood trees were cleared.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you, I mean, knowing that that is going in there and that's the far end of it. There's certainly going to expect to see the growth along fifteen, I would assume.
In between here, you're more likely to have growth along that area fifteen, rather than needing to install that. I mean, again, if you don't have the pump station here, that's why it talked about phasing. The, the gravity sewer is, well, there's no point in doing the gravity sewer if you don't have the pump station there to pump it back up to the existing pump station. So, so you either are doing it all at once, or you take a bite of it at, at a time. And, and, and this, it's more likely in that stretch that you're going to see the need from, from a development standpoint. And again, there, there's no action here today. And again, it, it just, you know, brought to the board. Again, you know, there's.
And I guess the, the last question is, I mean, we know that, the last question from my part, uh, you know that there is always inflation, if you would, in terms of, uh, projects, if you know, what, what is typical in, in these types of programs? Is it about five percent, 10% fifteen percent per year?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we would probably, so obviously the, the dollars that, that we presented are in today's dollars. Uh, we could extrapolate those based on what we think inflation is going to be, um, down the road. That's how we would basically benchmark it.
I think inflation is a bad term. I mean, we have inflation, but then you have what's typical type of cost increases per year in your industry. Um, maybe different from inflation.
I mean, yeah, typical is, is, is blown out the window in the last three years, unfortunately. Um, it, it's, it's really hard to say in this environment, and that's just my honest answer. I, we don't have a, we're doing our, our best we can with these estimates. Um, we, we build in, uh, this has a twenty five percent contingency built into it already. So we're already estimating that the total costs, the, the cost that we presented here was twenty five percent, you know, higher than what we actually believe the cost will be.
And usually when you, in, in a normal period, when you do contingency, you're maybe adding in 10% or something like that.
Right. But in the last three years, you say it's gone out the window.
Yeah, it's been like, I would say the worst job to have right now is a cost estimator. Because like, uh, there's still, we're still plagued with delays for materials, like certain materials are really expensive, certain materials are not so expensive. And it's just, it depends on who, who, who gets to it first sometimes, unfortunately.
And that, and that's a little bit too with, you know, having all that stimulus money, ARPA and CARES money. And then there was just, there was so much money put out there for infrastructure projects that there's just a lot of demand and, 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 and the supplies necessarily is, is much there. I mean, I, I think in some, some of the projects, and again, we'll be talking about more utility stuff, you know, later on, as we talk about the J R W A. But again, you know, a, a lot of things like mechanical stuff, the prices on pipe and mechanical stuff have really gone up over the past years, just because of some of that.
Right. And, and a lot of those ARPA funds are, they have to be used by twenty twenty six. So we kind of think that there will be some type of slowdown at that point. But, you know, will there be another stimulus bill at that point? Who knows? You know, it's, we're, we're beholden to, you know, hu- higher elected representatives. So, and, and a lot of those instances.
Okay, that's other question.
This one is not, this is more of a statement than anything else and probably, probably for Bobby. We talked about the expansion of the sewer plant at, um, the prison. We don't want to wait until we've filled up everything we've got. We want to make sure we have that in our pocket. Is there any way we can keep a running total going of where we are and how much we have left?
Oh yeah. I mean, what our allocation is.
Right, right.
As far as allocation is for.
Uh, just so we have something to look at to know. In the back of our mind, we better be prepared by this point. I guess it's what I'm saying, to have this done.
Yeah, I, I, I think what you're, let, let me kind of reframe it. So.
That's why I was looking up. I'm sitting here trying to figure out how to phrase this.
So, so like right now, we don't know what each individual lot or, or development is going to be doing. But we, we can find out some of those numbers and maybe give you a projection on some of that.
If we, uh, if we can get a running number going. So, cause you know, how long's the expansion for three hundred thousand gallons going to take? Young man from Newberry, can you answer that one?
Yeah, I mean, so there's, there's obviously going to be like a preliminary engineering stage. That's, that's probably about a year long period. Um, the design stage is probably another year long period. And then construction, you know, you're talking at least a year for construction.
But I think you're saying like, but we're, I, I think the question you're asking, Mr. Sheridan is, is that three hundred thousand from a projection standpoint, how long does it take before that runs out?
No, I'm, I'm done, but do we need to get, we need to get that ball rolling now?
Well, yeah. And, and, and again, some of that is some of the discussions with the DOC. I mean, if you don't have, if, if you don't have some of those dis- discussions going with the DOC, like, some of this, again, there may be benefit if you see all your growth happening right on fifteen. Again, you're going to get growth along. Yeah, two fifty and stuffs like that.
We've already seen that.
Yeah, but some, some of the downfalls with that is, is, is the, the force main on two fifty. You don't necessarily want people just hooking into your, into your force main. It, it's not good practice. You want, you want businesses going into a pump station and then pumping it in and, and everything from the force main going back to the DOC. So really, when this was created, you know, there is going to need to be some of these regional pump stations along the two fifty line. And that kind of goes back to, that goes back to this right here. Again, you, the black dotted line is the force main. But as you expand the system along two fifty, it's not good practice to hook directly into the force main. You're going to have to have, you know, where you see all these.
Those P's.
Where the P's are, you're going to need to have, you know, some regional pump stations along two fifty. So the businesses go to the pump station, you know, you know, right here, there's one nearby two fifty. So, you know, you, you have less, uh, gravity mains and enforcement. So that's, that's the ideal is they go to a pump station and then it, it gets pushed back and forced.
Do any of these projects qualify for the, you know, federal? You know.
Yeah. And then, and certainly those are some of the things that, that we're going to look at. I mean, I know there was something for, um, I think you sent me something for D, was it DEQ or, or something? I, I believe, but yes, I mean, I think with some of the stimulus money out there, there are still some opportunities for that. But again, before you even submit for that, if you don't have a plan in place or where you're trying to expand first, they want to see something in place first before some type of preliminary engineering before engineering report before they would provide grant funding to move a project forward.
So would it make sense to do the preliminary engineering? You know, show to them later.
For a lot of that stuff, I mean, you, you could, I mean, I, I don't necessarily know if it would make sense to do it along the whole route. I, I, I think what you need to do is you really need to look at what are your, what are your target areas and what are your areas that are more likely to, to develop sooner than later? I mean, certainly there are some areas in there that there's land that's larger land that's vacant, that's, that's mar- that's being marketed, that's more likely to happen. And there's some land that's, you know, there's, you know, some houses are along some areas and that's less likely. So that's where from a PER, you, you want to focus it on, on where you see development happening sooner, sooner than, than later. And, and that's kind of what the, the phasing,
Yep.
phasing approach would be. I mean, you could certainly do a whole PER, but then, you know, you don't want to do all the work.
Yeah, I would say the master plan kind of guides you to where you want to target that development. And that was the whole, really the whole impetus for that. And that, when you see the growth heading in certain areas, then you can pick off those projects from the master plan and say, we want to do a PER for this area.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Today's Bobby's birthday.
Twenty nine again, right?
You guys bring beer.
Hey Bobby.
I know where it's at though.
Happy birthday. Wow.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have our dogs running at large ordinance. Attorney, County Attorney.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. So last month, the board, uh, received a presentation from Mr. Dahl on the running at large ordinance. And he discussed, uh, basically there's been concerns of residents and the sheriff's office over the years, uh, requesting a, that running at large ordinance. Right now it's only in Lake Monticello. And so, and actually that part of the code would need to be amended anyway, because it only states it's in the Cunningham district and it's also two other districts need to be added to the code with the redistricting. So in your packet, the Louisiana County ordinance is in there. What I did is I drafted an ordinance, um, that's similar to Louisiana counties and kind of incorporated their language into our ordinance. Here, next slide please. So basically the optional amendments, um, to section four dash two dash two. Basically it'd be applicable countywide. Um, it'd be enforced by sworn law enforcement officers. Right now we only have one animal control officer. So that was one request is that we have language from the sheriff's office. There's a request that all sworn law, law enforcement officers could enforce it. Uh, the exemptions, uh, this came up during the last meeting. So basically there would be exemptions for dogs that are engaged in lawful hunting or training for hunting. There'd also be an exemption for dogs assisting in farming activities. Uh, the law or law enforcement officer could take the dog into possession and return the dog to the owner or custodian with a warning. Um, similar to the language in Louisiana County after three warnings, within two years, it'd be a hundred dollar fine. Now, obviously we could change that. We could give the board if they wanted one warning, two warnings before the fine. So it'd be a hundred dollar, um, fine. It wouldn't, um, some counties, um, have a criminal, uh, you can get a criminal citation where it's a misdemeanor here. It's just a hundred dollar fine. Next slide. Now, the required language in two thousand nineteen, the Virginia Code, section three point two sixty five thirty eight was amended. And it stated if a locality has a running a large ordinance, then you have to include language stating that if a dog is found running a large in a pack, that the owner or custodian is subject to a civil penalty of a hundred dollar, a hundred dollars per dogs that found. So a dog's running in a pack if it's part of a group of one or, one or more other dogs, basically. So even if we didn't change it to county wide, we would need to amend the ordinance to add this running in a pack language. But it would be applicable within Lake Monticello, which is where it's applicable now. Cause the state code says you can have running a large ordinance, it's applicable to a certain section of the county or certain subdivisions, or it can be county wide. So kind of, uh, state code gives that latitude. Uh, next slide. Um, so basically that, that's everything I have. If there are any questions.
The dog does not have a tag and you don't know who the owner is, where would it take the animal?
So if the dog didn't have a tag, they would take it to the Humane Society. As my understanding. Now you, we do have, um, a section of the code where if they don't have their rabies tag or their dog license, it's a separate.
Okay.
Fine. Um, right now that's enforced through animal control and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. One thing I've talked to the Commonwealth Attorney about is, uh, once, um, you know, as, since I'm on board and once I hire an assistant county attorney, it might be that we take over some of the animal control duties from the Commonwealth Attorney. But that'll be, it will in the future. So as far as, um, if, you know, if they're normally, I mean, if a dog has the dog tag, then they would just take the dog back to the owner. They would have the phone number on there or the address and animal control officer would take it back. Um, Deputy Strong is not here tonight, but she said there's any questions. I, I'm, I'll contact her tomorrow if any questions. And she said she'd be present, uh, if the board does want to, um, bring this forward for an ordinance amendment, she would be present at those meetings.
Can you go back to the one that talked about two years?
Yes.
Okay, once the owner customer has three or more violations within two years. It seemed like, seemed like a long time.
And again, the board, the board can make changes to that. That's weird. Louisiana's ordinance.
Right.
So for instance, in, in Warren County, where I previously worked, it was a class four misdemeanor. The first time or is a prepayable fifty dollar fine. Um, so I mean, that's kind of, you know, a really strong warrants where you could kind of meet in the middle and maybe give them one warning before you have a hundred dollar fine. It doesn't have to be criminal. It could be just a hundred dollar fine, but you could just give one warning. And then.
Right. I think the three or more is one, I think is a little bit paronymian. Once, oh, three or more.
And.
You don't know what more means. I think we need to be more specific.
At, at, in other words, if there's three, but no action was taken and then fourth, it doesn't create at that point in time.
Okay, I'll, I'll just use me as exactly the speaker.
All right, go ahead. Use a good example.
My lab, he's going to run through my underground fence that I paid two thousand dollars for. Now my three females will stay there as long as he's on his lead chain. But he breaks that lead chain every once in a while and takes off. I think that's why they have the three things there. Is situations where a hunting dog might chew through the chain link or dig out under the fence. Those things happen. It's just, I think that's why those things are there.
And Captain Peterson's here. I, like I said, he, he may have.
Does that sound like?
Like your dog's getting out all the time?
Like he needs.
So I would say that's fair. I mean, especially for the ninety nine percent of the population will have some, uh, owners that their dogs get out all the time, three, four, five times a week. But again, uh, with anything law enforcement, we have the ability to find the person or not. So that's all based on judgment of the officer at the time. So I think that's fair as it reads, uh, whatever you guys decide. Obviously we're going to, we're going to do it. But it's a tool for us, for those. Who are.
You definitely have to have. Yeah.
It just allowed you to.
Yeah.
Not Mr. Sherman.
Right.
Well, I got one neighbor that beats it. They'll film me pictures of them laying on her lap and.
I think that's what this comes down to is that just because a dog got out, doesn't mean it got reported to the police.
Correct.
And so you can have those situations where your lab's getting out and, you know, the neighborhood knows the dog, blah, 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 or whatever. So for there to, it seems it would have to be an aggravated situation almost for there to be a three time.
Yes. And I think it's going to be the way that the owner responds to law enforcement. I mean, that's not my dog. I don't care. You know, they're, I think this gives them a chance. You know, because some owners are going to be, oh my God, I'm so sorry.
Or, or there's a dog that's just like, some owners just letting them literally run at large and they're just terrorizing the neighborhood. I mean, you know.
Usually aggressive dogs that we're getting called on, like attacking, attacking chickens or whatever. Livestock, things like that.
Louisiana doesn't have an ARPA code section where they specifically list certain subdivisions. And in those subdivisions, they don't get a warning. It's a hundred and fifty dollar fine.
I mean, yeah, you could, I mean,
That's another option.
You could make it more restrictive in some areas too.
You could say like Lake Monticello, you don't get a warning.
That's in the H O A rules anyhow.
Uh, we haven't had the chief of police here as well.
Yeah, but he looks like he's back in bed asleep, but I'm not sure if I'm thinking clearly.
I would prefer to keep the current state law, I mean, the current law regarding Lake Monticello. Cause yes, it is an H O A rule, but our rules are just civil penalties that are very difficult for the, for the, I don't have a lot of pardon, time teeth behind them. Whereas if I can just write them a summons.
Excuse the pun.
You know, we, we can use the summons for the judicial issues. And again, like anywhere else, it's warrant summons are a rest. That's our options on a lot of things, you know. Your dog gets out, it's, it's one, one shot deal. It's no big deal, but we have judicial problems where other instances like we've had in the past where they get out and harm people and the owner just doesn't give a care, trying to phrase my language here. Uh, you know, we need, we need something to enforce that. You know, we're a lot more population than the rest of the county. So I was just asking you keep that one section, then do this one as well.
Do we have to have a public hearing on this?
So are you saying keep it, keeping the ordinance in, in place at a specific to like?
For Lake Monticello where we, we're, or just modify this one to where there's no three, three chances in two years. Cause that's going to be for tracking purposes, that's going to be hard to do. And.
In the, in the lake.
Still have no dog to large anyway. Oh, that's the, the rule is not, but, uh, yeah.
So for law enforcement, sheriff's office, we're going to only enforce the county ordinance. We can't force Lake Monticello.
When a deputy comes out, they can't really do anything. So even if I don't have anybody available and a deputy comes out, they can't really do anything. And we don't have the means to pick up the dog and carry it back. We just have to figure out who owns it. Write him a, send him a starter fine letter. Wait for him to come back and wait for compliance hearing and then let him pay the fifty bucks. So just easier for you to miss your summons on the same.
So right now in our current ordinance, there's no warnings. This is a hundred dollar fine within Lake Monachella.
Okay.
That's what he's requesting is that.
That's crazy thing.
There would be.
With, with the changes to the districts, making sure that the correct districts are attached to Lake Monachella, because I think it just says Cunningham right now.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, do we have, do we do any public hearing on this?
Yeah.
Two, two or three weeks in September, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, so like, for instance, today, if the board said, we want to move forward with an ordinance for this, what we would do is we would advertise and we would probably schedule it for the September second meeting in September. We'd advertise the, the ordinance change and we'd bring bring, bring kind of the, the final ordinance to the board and there'd be a public hearing and then the public could comment, uh but we'd probably try and get it for the second meeting in September. So that's where if the board wants to move forward, we just need some guidance on yes, we want to move forward and is there anything you want to change in kind of what we discussed?
Um how do we document uh violation results in wanting to owner? So customers, that's up to the sheriff. So you have a written.
Yes, ma'am. We have a CAD system. We track all those calls. So we'll know how many times we've been there.
It's not a verbal.
Correct.
They'll get to know the dogs.
You probably know some, you probably, you're, some of your folks are probably very familiar with some of the dog.
They are.
So did, did, did you look at others too, other municipalities?
I did. I mean, um the other two localities I worked in, we had running a large ordinance says, and then I looked at the other localities around here. Um so some localities do it criminal, some civil. Um and some do it where you have specific subdivisions, of course, not not allowed, some it's countywide. So the county, I mean, the state code gives a lot of latitude how the board wants to implement it.
Like I noticed Alamoorals um is a little more robust in, at least in the, in the wording, or they give more detail to. Did you look at Almoorals at all?
I didn't look specifically.
I mean, just one small example. Like ours says um hunting dogs or, or um.
Training.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm missing.
And I could always do a spreadsheet at the, at the next meeting showing the other localities, how they handle the ordinance and the different options.
Um, under the, so talking about hunting dogs, but we're uh, what we have here, it says for engaged in lawful hunting, training, hunting or training for hunting under the uh direction of its owner or custodian. Like I noticed Almoorals in I'm not sure that this is terribly relevant because it does say lawful in ours, but it says company of a licensed hunter where the dog is participating in organized fox and other game hunt. So.
I think licensed and lawful might be, uh again, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer.
Lawful would mean you need, I mean, you need to have a license.
Right.
To hunt properly.
The, the one thing I will say about that is you buy it in August when the hunting season comes up. So you might whenever, maybe, but there may be a lapse where you could catch them in a two week stretch. That would be my only thing with that. Where it's somebody that runs dogs all the time that have to train in them. Most of them now have spent thousands of dollars on GPS systems and can tell you exactly how many times they're barking, how fast they're running and where they're going.
Yep.
That's a good start.
They may not be with them, but
Yeah.
you can always imagine. Most of them can tell you, okay, he's right there.
We can add license, man, just a little more specific and spy, have that language.
Again, I mean, it's, it is, it says legal.
Like, like I said, the problem with license is you don't usually buy that license the same day every year. So you're gonna have a lapse.
Yeah.
So that, that would be my only thing.
Yeah.
True. And I see where Alamooral has the exemption for like their dog parks where obviously we have a dog park, so we're not.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think it's, it's, it depends on the dog park.
So some of the exemptions are kind of obvious, like.
But in Pleasant Grove, that may be one of the places that y'all have a lot of issues, don't you, or used to. I don't think you do any.
I mean, we still have quite a few people out there that let the dogs run, but they're controlled and
Right.
they're not letting them run around with their kids and people and attacking, so.
And a, a, and the board.
Spirit of the law.
The board's um I don't remember if it's the policy, but, but, but there are some designated on leash, off leash areas of Pleasant Grove Park.
That's what we did because they had a issue years back. Especially, I know the cross country team did because they had a couple of kids. In fact, coach actually got bit one time. With the dog running in there.
And, and you all feel good about this ordinance as written?
We do. I sat with uh Deputy Strong, who is our A C O. After uh County Attorney sent it over to us and it looked good to us. Um she didn't have, I think she had, she sent you some edits. I think she had a few comments.
She has had a few comments.
So we sent back, other than that, um it's a, it's a tool we don't have now. So it's, anything's better than nothing. And uh some of the recent cases we had, this is what kind of sparked it, so.
And so what, what is our next step with this?
Well, I guess they're just look for uh from the board, some guidance if we want to have warnings for the parts of the county other than Lake Monachella. Or if we want to be, we don't have warnings, we just go straight to a fine countywide. I guess some guidance on that question because I I know Chief has requested that there not be warnings for Lake Monachella.
And I, if I may, just also request it. Although marrying the two together, my concern is we married them together and then the countywide one doesn't go, I hate to see the Lake Monachella one disappear.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think.
Well, one disappear, you'd be amending the code. So one, you want repealing the whole code section.
Be interesting to hear the opinion, because this would be one people will be very opinionated about.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think this gives them what they're looking for, the opportunity to deal with people who are habitual, who are belligerent. For lack of a better word, that just don't care.
Like neighbors. We do need the, we need the, I've heard a few times today, whether we're going to automatically give them a fine. We do need officer discretion too. So the wording that can't be shall, because shall to us means we will. We don't have a choice. But we need the option to say may, right, may maybe issue a fine of a hundred dollars.
And a lot of times when you get to court, the judge may say, oh, you had a visible offense as the first time. Now I'm just on charge court costs and I'll leave the fine. So the judge always has that discretion too.
And it'd be different like Monachella. Whether, whether the dog came from Lake Monachella or from outside.
That's true. And back to the issue of the uh compliance issue, that only applies to residents. So if there's a guest or somebody's dog from even though they're not supposed to come in from across the street, they do, they walk their pet. So if somebody's dog came in and got off and bit somebody or do anything else, we can't charge them with compliance hearing. So that's where the, having the code section helps as well.
I mean, I, I've got a chocolate lab. We back up Lake Monachella. He's in invisible fence. He gets out sometimes. He goes right to houses in Lake Monachella, you know, and everybody knows him and everything, but.
We never got a call on your dog, sir.
You what?
We never got a call.
Yeah.
Those are the calls we don't get. We get the calls like.
Yeah.
Should all said, it's the aggressive. You know.
The habitual nuisance is where.
Yeah, coming over to attack.
Right.
Or.
And that's kind of my point, is it there's discretion. It's, it's, it's not an aggressive situation.
Our deputies know, I can probably speak for Chief. We're not outgoing to try to stroke everybody for uh running a large uh citation.
Yeah.
Obviously, I take everything into consideration and when, 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 when we need to use that tool, it's there for us.
Yeah, I, I, I think the main thing is this is for the habitual repeat offenders that just have no regard for their neighbors and, and, and everyone around them.
So I think the last recent uh well, couple, time blends together. So I think it was in the last three months, one of the, one of the dogs that um got away, attacked some chickens next door. Um obviously, uh the owners were ve- were very upset and I think the owner of the dog said, what are you gonna do about it? There's nothing we can do. There's nothing we could do about it except for a few things. Um so that's kind of what sparked all this, something we can use as a tool, even if it's a small fine and hassle of having to go to court and everything, that's something versus nothing.
Lot cheaper to buy the chicken at the, the grocery store.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Any other discussion?
Well, so we'll just if we, the next step is it'll come back in front of us in this form. Is that right?
I could have two options with the ordinance. I can have one where it has the warnings. And one, you know, one where it's not a warning. You can look at the two different options and advertise the one that you feel more comfortable with.
No, we can. So uh. I'm in favor of the warning myself.
What did you say?
I said, I'm in favor of the warnings myself. I think that's, again, it's not it's, it's, it's discretion. It's not, you know, not, not, not a, not a way to raise revenue per se, right? You know, so. The, the lake is maybe different because it's larger and, you know.
The, the only downside to warnings is a lot of people might try to talk to their neighbors two or three times on their own and then they still don't get action. So they might call us. For us, that'd be the first warning, but it might actually be the fourth time that the neighbors talking about their.
But though, though, it's gotta be written to, to not exclude the current thing for the lake anyhow.
Yeah, so I'm just putting it out there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the only bad part of the warning.
Would, would, would it be out of protocol to ask what I call our resident um within a person who dealt with the dog bite to give you. And I just wonder, I, I just wonder from her perspective as a parent who had a really violent thing happen as a dog bite.
I, I, I am, uh, I, I, I don't want to put.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make this real easy. Would the three warnings put you in a bad spot or would you rather have it be the shall beforehand?
What you mean?
Would, would, would you rather just be shall and then the first time you show up, if they want to be not a very nice citizen?
We like officer discretion at times. So if you say shall, I have to.
He's worried. That, that's what, get my words. I teach P E now.
That's true.
Be warranted.
Weightlifting, discretion, protein.
Yeah.
Um yeah, so take the, I would suggest say if we want to give warnings, take word, word shall to give us that discretion, because if it's a chocolate lab running, as I have a chocolate lab as well, I know she's not gonna do anything.
That's not where you got it.
Trying to sell us another one. I know, I, I, I don't, right? So I know that if the officer comes, I got, we know his dog is isn't attacking anybody. It's more of the aggressive behavior type stuff that
Right.
we need to, the ability to do the things then.
So. I know where. I was asking Jennifer though, and I think you were.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Uh, I, I, I would, I would say no.
Okay.
I just.
That's for me personally.
Yeah.
Just because of the trauma that was involved in all that.
Yeah.
On all sides of the house.
So the uh one clarification on the dogs running a pack in the pack, that, that's language from the state code and that is shall.
Right.
So that's not optional.
Yeah.
That's the little difference. If they're running in a pack, so there's more than one dog, then an officer doesn't have that discretion.
Okay, well, when you say pack, are you talking about a wild pack? Because one of my females follows my way about all of a sudden I'm a pack.
Dogs. It could be two, your two dogs.
More dogs.
Yeah.
That was the language that was added in two thousand nineteen to the state code.
You know, hunters don't turn loose one at a time.
That's one thing. I think we're clear then, right?
Yeah.
And you think, you think you've got your uh.
Yep.
Your director.
We can just have it a little bit separate. Lake Monachella's language would be a little bit different than the rest of the county, which that's the way Louisiana does it. They have certain subdivisions that have different language than the rest of the county. So we can do something similar to that and I can bring it back to the board and
Okay.
if there's any other tweaks to that point, we can still like tweak before we advertise it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, truckers tractor trailer signage.
Yeah, we'll try to be really quick on this. Again, you know, we were notified by the sheriff's department. So, so there's an issue. It's not an ongoing issue and, and this is so there is a steep incline at the bottom of six eighteen Lake Monachella Road and South Boston Road. There's instances where, where, where tractor trailers coming through this area are stalling out here because they come to a stop and trying to go up a steep incline. They're stalling out and it's creating traffic issues there. And again, it's not an ongoing issue. But so, so speaking with sheriff's office, speaking with V dot, what things can be done to do that? Um certainly to have a sign that says no through trucks. That is a hard and fast thing that requires um V dot to do a, a, a special study. It takes time. It can take a year. It's way more involved. All we're looking for as a potential um as a potential, you know, first step. And, and this doesn't take anything, that this is something that V dot's looking at right now is, is just getting a sign. And again, it just happens, this sign was in Stevensburg. They have a route six hundred. Yeah, I mean, I mean, so again, you know, just, just putting a sign in there that says, you know, uh truckers, route sixteen is not recommended for tractor trailers. Um again, there's no meat, there's nothing behind it that says you're gonna pull them over. It's just a recommendation. So hopefully they don't go up there. And, and I know Captain Peterson, you know, there's been a couple of instances where.
I, I will tell you right now. Twice last year when I was on the school bus, we talked about this. I came up the hill and right as the first curve happens, there's a tractor trailer sitting there going, man, just broke down. And you got the traffic coming down the hill and I'm trying to go up the hill and um anyway.
It happens probably half a dozen times a year. It probably takes about four or five deputies to control the traffic because we have to be on high point, low point. And then that takes three right there at Lake Monachella in South Boston. Um and sometimes they're broken down two, three, four hours. So really resource heavy. They can't get up the hill and sometimes they go down the hill and can't stop, which causes another problem. Um or crashes into other cars, which.
Is there a way to report those kinds of things on, because I know truckers use a G I S truck. They use their own you know, G I S system for trucking. Um and, and I know this because um Route fifty three right there and that turns by, by uh
Buck Island?
No, no, by.
A Monachella.
A Monachella there. Um I had, that truck was coming up and literally ran over one of my cars. Um you know, and, and the other car behind it, you know, my employee was in the car and his truck was so long that, you know, as he was making the turnaround, it his back end was on top of the, the top of the front end of my car. Um unfortunately, nobody was hurt, but you know, the, the trucker, he was of course distraught and he says, you know, it's on my G I S system that I could take this. Yeah, and uh I, I just don't know if there's an actual way to report those kinds of things.
Sir, I don't know the question though, but I can definitely get the answer.
Yeah.
Um state police would know.
Great to have that, but also if it's in the G I S system.
True. I'll give our troopers and find out how we get that through their system.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're gonna work with V dot to get a, a sign like this installed there. Just something s- simple. Again, maybe it stops one truck from going up there and, and, and again, there's really no cost to the county and it saves the resources of, of, of the sheriff's deputies. And again, it's not a lot, but that one occasion or two occasions that they have to get three, four extra deputies out there to manage it is just it's, it's a use to.
Let's do it.
And then we can say, hey, did you see the sign? Are you gonna see the sign?
Signs everywhere.
I think it was harrowing to go around it.
And, and things like that breed crashes as well. So a truck stuck on Lake Monachella Road on that hill created a pretty serious crash because people don't pay attention. Et cetera, et cetera. So it's just a hot mess. And uh I think that was, um Mr. Dahl and I talked about it, I think a week or two ago, and will definitely help, I think.
It, it, it's a start without going down the long uh tedious road of trying to do a study and then taking twelve months to, to have something that's more that has more teeth behind it, so to speak, so.
Which is, you have to have trucks go, but they can come from the other end of it. Instead of the hill. Yeah, just means they'd have to go around.
Yeah, yep. So anyway, that's, this one, we're just informing the board of that, so.
All right, thank you. Uh J R W A project cost.
Yes, J R W A project cost. Okay, um so again, I I brought this to the board and updated back in, it was December of twenty twenty two about J R W A project cost. So again, just for those that are here online or in the room, again, the original project where I have on the screen, it says old route. This was the intake on the Point of Fork and that was roughly the route and we are connecting to a, an existing water line right there that Louisiana County has going all the way up into into their county, Fern Cliff, and then connects into our system. So the old route was about I wouldn't say about a mile, mile, mile and a half, no, no, no greater than. Um and again, you know, and I'll give the next slide. The the new route that we've been looking at is about three to four times that distance. It's about a four mile route. Um, and again, to kind of go back to that, um, you know, really this kind of precipitated by some. By the community and by the Monakin Indian Nation, um, showing that that the point of fork was um. What was, you know, basically was was Razweck and 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 was the burials of their ancestors there. And so 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 from that, um, the J R W A and. And through Department of Historic Resource and lots of state agencies. Decided to move move the pump station to what is called Al- Alternative One C, or if you go back, the new route, which is the four mile route. Um, again, the Monakin Indian Nation, they issued a letter of support for that, for the new route. Um, and again, so so just kind of talking what's been done, you know, there's been our phase one archaeological surveying that's been done along the whole route. Um. Decision to proceed, there was a August twenty twenty-two, a joint permit applicant. Joint permit application submitted to uh the Army Corps and D E Q. Um, you know, move forward with a comprehensive agreement to design for design engineering services and lots of other things. The fall of twenty twenty-two, phase two archaeological and architectural surveying took place. That needs to be done from a from a Department of Historic Resources standpoint, just because there are some spikes, some spots. That were known resources and making sure there's no other resources in the area. Um. So kind of that brings us to where we are kind of now summer of twenty twenty-three. So so through that, through that comprehensive agreement, there's been an initial design completed. Which gives us uh which is called the G M P, get guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the project. Um, we've got our, um, we're expecting our our permit applications from D E Q and Army Corps. Uh, D E Q, right now, we've got a draft permit application. Um, that is, that is out and that's out for comment for thirty days. Um, and then, you know, usually what happens, D two's application gets approved first and then the Army Corps kind of follows suit. Uh, we are in the process of right now, there is a phase through archaeological data recovery, fieldwork and study. The R F P is out. And then, you know, we've been working towards property acquisition. We haven't purchased any properties, but there's been, there's been. Strong discussions on 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 some of the key properties. Um, so really where that brings us, um. Let me get rid of this here. Really where that brings us is is what's the cost of the project at this point? So what when I, when I reported to the board back in. Uh, back in December of last year, the construction, the estimated construction price was about, it was just under thirty-five billion at that point. Now the construction price is about thirty-nine point six million um for the construction piece. In addition to the construction piece, there's a lot of other um components in here in this five point nine million dollars. There's permitting, there's property acquisition, there's the phase three um s- uh fieldwork and studying. Um, there is uh Dominion Electric Transmission Line Construction. Um, you know, construction administration and inspection. So out of this five point nine million. This is a high water estimate right now. This is a worst case scenario. Out of this five point nine million, there is about three factors in here that that that. Total five million and we're hoping in the next couple of months to get some more clarity. Um, one, there's the R F P for the phase three, which that is, that could potentially be. Not as much as as we hoped it is. Um, so so we're waiting to see where that price comes in. The one thing is for sure is the price to construct the project and 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 finishing out some of the. Small design components after working with the design build engineer, thirty-nine point. It's called thirty-nine, almost seven million dollars is the cost for the project. So. Again, total project, total price for both of those components is forty-five point six million. Again, this five point nine will probably come down some, but we'll find out more in 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 the coming months, what that is. Um. So so let me kind of go back. I mean, so so again, let let's just say it's a forty-five point six million dollar project. Let's just say that's where it ends up. Uh, one thing is for certain, we have the J R W A still has about four million dollars of of proceeds that they originally took out. For the project back in twenty seventeen. Um, so that forty-five point six, you know, brings you down to about forty. I think forty-one and some change. Um. And then in addition, you know, so that's that's a fifty fifty share between Fluvan and Louisa for that twenty twenty-some million dollar project. Um. Um, the J R W A did submit for a a grant application to V D H. Um, for, I want to say it's right around forty million dollars for for total project cost. Where where I think we're supposed to get some information or or they're supposed to announce awards. I think September, October timeframe. Um. And then in in addition, Fluvan County, as we were going through the proffers with Dominion, we had earmarked some money. From at the time, what we what we thought was going to be the price of the project and for our portion of the project, and certainly those prices have gone up. As as Brett, you know, certainly spoke about before, talking about water and sewer projects, the last three years, they've been. Estimating those projects is 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 a different world than what it was. Um, so again, we're at a. You know, we're at somewhere, when I reported to the board back in December was. Construction plus some of these other things was going to be a thirty-five to forty million dollar project. Now we're looking a forty to forty-five million dollar project potentially.
Thought that we were not able to use the Dominion funds for the J R W A.
We are allowed to use it for our portion of our portion of the water line that goes to Route Six.
So we can't use it from Route Six to the.
Correct.
Okay. I thought we could use it for the whole thing.
So we could use it for our portion of 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 that. Um.
And we originally thought our portion at the start of this was going to be what again?
For this total project?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, when we were back to the point of fork, I mean. I think when this kind of first came out, when we took out debt proceeds for that about mile, mile and a half project. Looking at no more than ten million dollars.
I I don't even know if that was our portion. I think it was like six.
It was eleven.
I thought the whole project was eleven.
I'm not saying our portion was ten. I'm I'm saying the total project was ten to maybe a little bit more. Yeah. And again, that was on a mile and a half project now because of some some. Because of having to be because of having to move that project, we're at a project that's, you know, three to four times that length and.
Like ten ninety dollars a mile. That's just kind of.
So exacerbate that times the length, exacerbate that by as as.
Back to where we were in two thousand and eight. When Louise and Luana talked about about it coming, um, I did James up fifteen and it was going to be twenty-five million a piece. Sixteen, that was at sixteen years ago. So we're still at twenty-five million sixteen years later. But if we had done it, we've never done anything with this and crashed. We're done it then we'd have sixteen years of.
So I mean, ju- just to talk about some future timelines, I mean, so some that some, again. So so Louise is going to be um Christian with Louise is going to be bringing this to his board next Monday. We've got a uh James River Water Authority Board meeting next week, so we're going to kind of be. Sending out the, want to email the board, all the boards on this, on kind of the total cost and kind of discussing it. Um, you know, certainly from a from a joint venture standpoint, you know, to move forward. In 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 the months or so, we're going to need some direction from from both local boards because there's going to need to be some.
We know how Louise is.
Yes.
They've already spent fifty million dollars.
They've spent, I think they spent close to fifty million on their water line and their and their water treatment, treatment. That has no water.
And it could, the price could still change. It's just like.
Again, with this, so so the thirty-nine point six, that is, that is a guaranteed maximum price. There is no change orders with that. That is.
So it could come in less.
It could come in less.
So what would you be looking for from the board?
Well, I mean, a- again, for for this evening, not a whole lot, but I but I guess. Just from a discussion standpoint is.
We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
Right.
There is no discussion. There is no choice.
We have to.
If you if you stop, if you said, we're not going to do our part, Louise is going to sue us. So there is no choice.
Yeah. I I I don't know that. I mean, the the thing that I know for certain is is. Is this project was to be Fluvan County and Louisa County's long-term water supply.
Like we can back out of the.
Yeah.
Right now in Zott Crossroads, we have.
Hundred and twenty-five. Seventy-five thousand gallons.
Seventy-five thousand gallons of this.
Yeah.
If we're going to grow up there, we have to have more. Digging wells up there. I think you've already tried.
No, there was a hydro, Wayne Stevens, when he was here, they. We did some hydro, hydro, we did hydrogeologics, hydrogeologic studies for groundwater and it was. It was not, it it did not produce good results.
It's not feasible.
So s- s- so some upcoming things is one, you know, we kind of talked about what we've done so far. You know, we need some direction from the boards to move forward. You know, we're we're looking at some of these funding aspects of it too. You know, that's that's certainly a huge app. That's certainly a huge thing. If we were able to get some type of grant funding, that would certainly. That would certainly change some things and 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 make make the the lift a lot lighter.
This would be definitely within the grounds of infrastructure.
It it is, and and I think in this, because we submitted a grant application a year ago, and unfortunately. Um, the state was just inundated with applications and and a lot of the applications at that, at that point that got priority. Were for systems that were failing, really what it is.
This is a failing system.
Well, I I I will say we. You know, we've had good discussions with some of the V D H reps. I I I think um uh Mr. Goodwin and myself with Louise, I think we put together. A lot more of a a robust application package with some good reasoning behind it.
Louise has got great reasoning back. They got a ten-year-old water line, never hauled water. We had a house that burned down that was on a driveway with a fire hut. That we could not hook up to.
But I will tell you too, you know, there's besides that, I mean, I think our fork union project also, there's a benefit to that because. From V D H's standpoint, they just don't want to see, okay, well, you you got this for economic development. They want to know what are the other things from a.
Revitalization.
From a, well, and from a people standpoint, you know, and from a, um, you know, again, full union, we've got a, we got the full union project. That this water is needed to feed into that project to get a long-term reliable source. So there's a lot of data pulling in from the grant application, showing what type of existing customers and future customers it's going to impact. Um, you know. You know, what are some of the areas that it's going to be going to? A- again, I think we had a better grant application and and we were. We put a lot more effort in into it and and we're able to, I think, take some good angles with it. Um, and 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 produce solid data. You know, but there's still things, you know, that this project, just like we did before, this this project's going to have to come back before the board. Um, for a special use permit on its current location. Um. And so, and really to kind of keep on a timing standpoint, we would probably want to do that. We would want, the J R W A would have to submit to Fluvan County a special use permit application, probably by September one. Again, one thing we are looking at. Potential, let's just say that that we're moved, let's say the boards, all boards say we want to move forward. Hoping to have all the design and everything finished by end of year or early of twenty twenty-four to start construction of spring of twenty twenty-four.
The um, how much of the of the Dominion money would be, do you have a projection of how much of that money is allocable? Allocateable to.
So so.
Twenty-two million dollar cost.
So what we did is we, at the time, we had estimated ten million dollars was going to go. At the time, this was two, two and a half years ago. That portion was going to be about ten million dollars towards Fluvan's portion of the project. So we kind of. Again, we had the big forty-seven million dollars of project. We allocated about ten million towards the J R W A project. And we allocated thirty-seven million to the Fork Union Water Supply Improvements. Um, again, if we don't get water, we can't do Fork Union Water Supply Improvement, so um.
So we don't get that money?
Yes.
Oh, thank goodness we got that money. That's that's.
Yep.
And then, so you got the ten million, you got the four million that's already allocated in the fund balance or allocated to the project already.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess that's committed fund balance money.
Well, I mean, the the four million, again, the four million existing proceeds comes right off the top of the project because that's a shared.
Right. But that was, I guess, is the money in the J R W A's hands, the four million.
Yes.
And and they've gotten most of that still or whatever.
Yes.
Um, and we don't have anything in committed funds and fund balance towards the J R W A.
From Fluvan? No. It it was, it was all in 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 debt proceeds pre- uh previously and we're and we're paying. We're paying an annual debt service payment for those debt proceeds.
For the four million dollars.
Well, it was, it was, it was originally was a, it was a six, eleven, eight million dollar debt issuance. And we ended up getting proceeds above that um for the project. I I think it was right around, it was right around. Eight and a half million or so, eight and a half, nine million.
I spent the four million.
And so it's four million's been spent. Again, there is a lot of.
So this is, this is above the, so there's a four million left.
Yes.
We've already spent.
Yes.
So there's already been eight million spent. So the real total net cost of the project is closer to fifty-three million dollars.
Take, take, we'll take four million off of that forty-five, right?
No, I've not spent.
Yeah.
It's in that four million already.
Yeah, i- if if you're saying, if you're saying what the the proceeds we took out and you add that to the forty-five million, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Instead of fifty-three, it's forty-nine.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Don't, don't ask me to say words, so. Captain already put me in harm's way. Have my brain strained.
So I mean, again, no formal actions. This is just to kind of one, at least I know this is.
Good update.
Well, it's it's a shell shock. It's a big, it's a, it's a big number. I mean. It's a big number for certain. And again, when when we talked about this, when we gave the update, December of twenty twenty-two. Again, we were looking at thirty-five to forty million. Now we're forty to potentially forty-five million.
Well, one thing that we, one thing that will come up with this for us because of this new route. We're no longer going to have to come up Route Six and cross under the Ravanah again.
Right.
Because that would have been a fifteen million dollar project right there. So that's fifteen million that we can take off. I'd say maybe not fifteen, but eleven.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost.
Under the river is the most, I remember that part. Going under the river is the most important, the most expensive part.
Yeah, if you, there's a. There's a, there's a cost somewhere to, I won't say it was a river.
Rock blasting or no.
So if all of this is, you know, eventually a go, when will the water be?
Ravanah River crossing open, that is about a billion dollars. That's just, that's.
That's just to cut.
That's just to cut the river.
Right. So we're still, we will still have to come between eight to ten million dollars in funds.
Potentially, if we don't get the grant.
If we don't, if we don't get.
Yes.
We get the grant.
And 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 so and so that'll be some discussion with the board, how that, what that looks like if we don't get the grant and if the board says we want to move. We're moving forward.
Get the grant, then the ten million dollars that was allocated. From Dominion would not be allocated. We couldn't reallocate that anywhere else.
No, because in in the proffer agreement, there was something in there regarding the James River Water Authority Project. That if there was external grant funds. That when, that were applied to the J R W A project, the money that was allocated towards that would. Yeah. You couldn't reallocate it something.
Yeah, we'll go back to the minute.
If memory serves me correct. When there was a discussion of us not moving forward with the J R W A, the J R W A agreement we already signed, and Mr. Payne advised us that. We could not back out of it, so. Just.
Yeah.
Almost a hundred percent.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I'm I'm catching Dan up to speed on a lot of the J R W A stuff and so um.
Like I said, it has bad points, has good points. We just got.
It is what it is. I'm not.
We got. Move forward with that.
No, no, it's just just. Additional expense.
Like I said. If we get the grant money, great. If we don't get the grant money, that additional money was plenty. We're going to have to spend it.
Right, right. But I mean, we have a target number of maybe eight million bucks, you know.
And I'll bet you it would have cost eight million to go from Primo Road to the. To go under the river and get down there at least six or seven.
So so once again, next week, Louise's board will get the same type of presentation. We're at, talk, talk about the cost of the J R W A. And so I'm I I I'm sure I will be coming back to the board. Soon with some type of, some type of decision points on this. But but again, I wanted to just present the material first, let it sink in and. And and like I said. I'm sure there will be questions.
Even though it's expensive.
Again, we we we've got good, we've got good progress and we got good movement moving forward on it. It's just, it's expensive.
Yeah. And it would seem that we would want then, your thoughts, since it's come up several times on the legalities of. If the agreement didn't, if we didn't fulfill our side of it.
And I'm not attending the next meeting.
And I'm not attending the next meeting in the J R W A, and also I've been taking, talking to their legal counsel, kind of catch up to speed. On, um, basically how they agree and where they.
Yeah.
Where we are and all, talking to Brendan Hefty.
Yeah.
Legal counsel.
And Fred's, at that time, Fred's opinion was that if we did not participate, if we reneged on the agreement at that point in time. Then not only would Louisa win, they could collect the money from us and they could deny us access to any of the work. So it was a double whammy, you got nothing and you still pay.
Yeah.
And this went back to before Mr. O'Brien and I were on the board. When, when the decision was made to move from Brimmo.
It was a good decision, it's just we had things happening between, you know, you had that. Monica Nation, you had other things happen, so.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
I can go back further than that, but it's no need.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Booker.
I said I can go back. We missed a great opportunity in the nineties.
Yeah, with the one dollar railroad acquisition.
Yeah.
When, when that water was coming out of the James, because we, I mean, my Jerome was on the board, they worked very hard to get prison. In Fork Union and had the water coming, it would be in Fork Union. And if, in nineteen ninety seven. That's when he got off the board because they put it in a referendum and the referendum failed, so he said, well.
All right.
Yeah.
Any question?
Any questions? Thank you. What do we have to do?
Of course, we watered it down to.
We have to do.
The essentials.
Okay, um, oh, let me go on, consent agenda. Okay, minutes of July the fifth, twenty twenty three, L Blue Ridge Area Food Bank Partner Impact. And Innovation Grant. Would anyone like to speak to Kate or else? If not, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So may.
All right, Mr. Sheridan made the motion to accept the consent agenda, and Mr. Bryant second all in favor. I had terrible time. Do we have any unfinished business?
Can I just bring up two really quick points?
Yeah.
One, so the, and this is just kind of more, more knowledge for Caitlin. Uh, Caitlin gave you all the VACO thing, so she's just looking for head counts for who wants to go to VACO, the VACO conference. Um, so if you can, I'm not sure.
I'll be going.
Yeah, I filled mine out.
Okay.
I guess the real question was what banquet or no banquet, right?
Yeah. I said, yes.
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 Um, I think that, um. Since it's my last, I should not go, I don't need to spend that money to go. What, what do you see that going?
So that's three, that's three, three more, okay.
Maybe you'll be honored.
Um, and then one, one other quick thing, so la, at the last board meeting. There was a, there was a agenda item where the board gave me some flexibility with J P Morgan proceeds. To go up to nine hundred thousand, well, we had a couple extra projects that were being delayed, like the lighting project. And so we talked to J P Morgan and they're giving us a six month extension. Um.
The money you had.
The money we had to spend by August third, which is tomorrow, so they're giving us a six month extension. That doesn't necessarily change a lot of things, we're still going to have to swap around some projects, because again, like a lot of the fire and rescue apparatus. But instead of giving me the latitude to just swap them out, I'm going to come back to the board with some formal. Some formal recommendations on, on what we need to swap out, because again, there's still some, some, some fire rescue apparatus, that's not going to be done in time by that. Even that extension, so just wanted to get the board an update on that, and that, that's all I have.
Okay, good, thank you. Any new business? Uh, uh, now we'll open the second public comments, anyone like to speak to the board? Come to the lifter and give your name and address and talk to the board. I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the second public comments.
Adam Chair, I move the county board's supervisors entering to close meeting pursuant to the provisions of. Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven eight one, section two dot two, and thirty seven eleven eight five. Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven eight six, section two dot two dot thirty seven eleven eight, according to the nineteen fifty eight amendment. For the purpose of discussing personnel, county administrative performance, respective industry, prospective business update. Investment in funds, J R W A project, legal matters, Department of Emergency Services.
Okay, did I have a second? Second. Uh, motion by Mr. O'Brien, second, Mrs. Speaker, all in favor. So we are now in closed session.
I'm used to you also.
All right, Matt, chair, move the closed meeting and adjourn. Atlantic County Board of Supervisors convening in an open session. Here is all the board supervisors that hereby certified to the best of each member's knowledge. One only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements in the section two dot two dash thirty seven. And eight, the court of general nineteen fifty has amended. And two only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closing was. We mean, we're her discussed or considered in the meeting.
All right, we have motion to come out of closed session for Mr. O'Brien, secondment, Mr. Sherinall in favor.
So roll call.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Chris Fairchild. This Patricia Eager.
I, Stoney O'Brien.
Hi. Mr. Mike Sherry. And a chair both side, we have a motion to.
So we got a motion to extend the meeting to ten.
Okay.
Motion to do a second.
Yeah, just make second, yeah, make it again.
We have a a motion to extend the meeting to ten and secondment, Mr. Brown, all in favor. Chair both side next, oh, we can, Mr. O'Brien motion to adjourn, we have second, second, Mr. Did you say second?
Second.
All in favor, all right, Chair both side.